Sorry. Okay.
We need to put this over in the phone.
We need to put this over in the phone.
I can see you. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, he can hear now.
Okay.
Let's.
All good.
Okay. Hi, Lan.
Good morning. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay, well, you missed the opening and the roll call, but you can probably see online that we have who's here.
Yes.
We will now move to item three, which is a moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. And we will now move to item three, which is a moment of silence for grounding and gratitude. Thank you. Grateful to be here, grateful for a safe drive across our beautiful county. Great. Yeah. Came to be with us today. Um, reviewing the agenda, my understanding is that we are going to shift the Department of Human Services Agenda Item to November, was that right, Carmen? Um, yeah, that that shifts to November. Other than that, I believe everything on the agenda is good. Anyone else have any thoughts or comments? About the agenda? Okay. Uh, do we need to have a motion to revise the agenda or no?
Nope, there's no changes.
Well, we just moved item 10.
Um, I think.
That's okay, all right, yeah, that's we have a record of that.
Yeah.
Okay, and public comment for items not on the agenda. Um, normally, we limit comments to three minutes. Um, but because we're in Egner and as we do in other parts of the county when we travel, we have an extended public comment period. So unless anybody came just for the first few minutes, we can just. Maggie, yeah, did you want to speak quickly or do you want to do it when we get to public, uh, the big opening listening session?
Oh, listen.
Listening session, okay, all right, so we'll we'll um. Open and close public comment and then we'll have a nice long time to hear from folks when we get to seven A. Um, moving on now to the consent agenda, just two items on there. I'm super pleased to see fiber optic facilities easement agreement. Thank you, Mike, and I've been working on that for a really long time.
Thank you, Maura.
Oh, and Maura. And, um, as usual, thank you to Carmen for all those minutes. I do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, approve this consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
How do you vote?
I.
I as well.
The consent agenda is approved. Now we move on to the fun part, uh, listening session for Egner residents. We have allowed up to seventy-five minutes for this, but if there's more, we could probably flex, or if there's less, we can also flex. Um, our goal would be to get through this by about eleven twenty, so we can move on to Matt Gonzalez's presentation. But we are here to hear from you and to share with you, so, um, shall we begin? Maggie, I know you already have had something on my, oh, yes.
Michael and Grace will need to leave shortly after this, so if they could start with just an update, that would be awesome.
Oh, sure, let's do that. Oh, and I forgot to mention something else as well. Um, this is important. Um, the Hankins parcel, West End subdivision exemption application will be heard on October fifteenth. And, um, just the way the timing worked out for public noticing and so forth, we weren't able unfortunately to have that here today. We tried and it just wouldn't work with all the requirements. So Carmen has very kindly put together, um, information about how somebody from this area of the county can make a public comment during that hearing on October fifteenth. Obviously, you're very welcome to drive over and attend and listen through that. There's also an opportunity to be on Zoom and you can do that either on the phone or on the computer. Um, we have live streaming on YouTube. There's no way to interact with us, um, from YouTube, so if you want to make a comment, it would be, you know, during that session, you'll probably want to be on Zoom. Um, and then, of course, you can always either mail or email public comments to the B O C C prior to that meeting. And lastly, we have a form here. Um, is that this?
Carmen, uh, it's just underneath.
Uh. Is it this?
No.
That's the packet for the, okay, um, the application.
It's similar.
Oh, here, okay.
Yeah.
So Carmen's made a form that you can fill out today, there it is. And, um, we'll she'll collect those and provide, keep those in the packet for the B O C C and the public review, um, before the fifteenth. Um, if there is interest, we can also set up a Zoom link here, but we're only gonna do that if someone asks. So if you're interested in doing that, whether on your own or with friends or community members, um, there's instructions on this memo to about how to make a reservation, or if you will, and and then we'll get that set up if there's interest. So, um, sorry about that timing, but I feel like the staff has done an amazing job of trying to accommodate public comment as best we can, lots of options in this memo. Um, okay, so Grace, did you want to make a few comments before you have to leave?
If the rest of the team's gonna leave, then I'm gonna stay, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, and Michael?
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Do you all know Michael Wazinski, our our clerk, San Miguel County Clerk?
No. Michael Wazinski. Nice to meet you all.
He's the other Mike.
The other Mike.
Um, I'm just wondering if you want to maybe sit up here so you can get caught on the camera if anybody's watching online, a little, just a little. Did you do your hair and makeup this morning, Mike?
Oh, around, oh.
Looks like it. Looks like you did your hair and makeup.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that. I did get a haircut a couple of weeks ago. Jared, you didn't notice, but, uh. Against yet. Yeah, so my plan is to bring some D M V services to Egner. The the fire department had had allowed us to use this space. So I'm working with the state right now to get some equipment out here. Uh, so once a month, hopefully, we come out here and we do D M V services. From vehicle registration, title, third renewal and stuff like that. And hopefully it grows and maybe we can expand that to recording services or other services as needed, but right now it's D M V services.
And how will people find out about those dates?
That's a very good question. Um, there's a bulletin board around here, we're planning to post on that, we're gonna put it on our Facebook page, and Megan has mentioned something about social media platforms.
Yep, I see a thumbs up for her.
The radio.
Emails, we have an email list.
We have an email list for Egner, okay?
Yeah.
When you said bulletin board, you referred to the post office?
Yes.
And I think sometimes we put posters up at the water dock as well, right?
Is that?
That's right here? Yeah, okay.
Does that work for the? Maybe.
So, sorry, what part didn't work for you?
Your email.
It did.
I never got an email about this meeting.
You didn't, okay.
Thanks to water. Tell this and.
Anytime, anything's going on. This is checking the outside.
But we can also make sure that you're on that list. Um, should you want to talk to Megan or to Carmen?
Yeah.
With your.
It's on the twice, last time.
Oh, no.
You are.
Thank you for letting us know. Okay, so, yeah, I think that's actually really good information to everybody if you didn't already know that, which I don't know that I did. There is a specific list of folks with Egner email addresses that when there's an Egner-related matter, we send out the notice by email. So I know if you're not on the computer much, it can be tricky, but, um. That's what we got right now. Grace.
I take it back, this is new folks, we've got our clinical staff from public health here, um, they're wrapping up, but if you want a clear COVID vaccine, we have it available for the next two minutes, so come on over if you want to, otherwise, we'll catch up the next time.
You can step into our very private, um, uh, clinic behind the T V, oh, behind the ambulance, there you go.
And there's cinnamon rolls that come with.
Okay, so did you all hear Michael say that there're gonna be D M V services here?
No. I'm sorry, I walked in like, I thought the meeting was at ten thirty.
Oh, ten.
Okay, no problem, uh, Michael, do you want to just?
Sure.
Do that?
My plan is to bring D M V services to Egner one one day a month. So vehicle registrations and transfers, removals, stuff like that. Aren't you loving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, where are you living or trying to? Here.
Here, yeah. So once we get the equipment from the state, and they're working on it right now, um, we'll make some kind of public announcement, we'll post it on the bulletin boards that the whole office can now hear.
And the extra email?
We'll parent, yeah, send the extra email. And everyone gets that. So that's the plan.
We'll get that straightened out.
I've been getting those emails, that's been working.
Post office, I have nail delivery and I have water, so I don't go to water lot either. If I'm not getting email, I'm not gonna find it. Well, they go to the post office.
I don't have to.
I don't need it.
Okay, well, I'm glad to know for the most part it's working, but we'll get you straightened out for sure. Yeah, okay, we'll figure that out. Um, alrighty, anything else from Michael?
Nope, that's it.
Did you want to say anything about elections?
Yeah. Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah, so the ballots are gonna be mailed on the tenth of October. Everyone hopefully is registered to vote, if not, there's still plenty of time to do that. Um, just make sure you vote, return your ballot.
Okay.
And do we have a ballot box out here or we nail from here?
Nail.
Nail?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
In the mail.
Now, you can.
At the courthouse.
You can drop it in your Dropbox and they'll make sure that we get it.
You have to go in through the courthouse, because the last few, they actually not giving use of their box.
Okay.
Okay.
But yes, you can.
All right.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure if this is the last election or two elections ago, but the when the, uh, ballot pack came out, it did not indicate that Norwood had a, we thought a drop box. And and it showed all these different places to drop off as a tell you right. And it showed Norwood. Well, I ended up calling up the county and said, really, you dropped Norwood? They said, oh, we just didn't bother to print it on the pack. Again, that Norwood is wasn't, has an available drop box.
It does.
And and anyway, I remember it was one election ago or two elections ago, but that was not showing on the on the public packing.
And when you say pack, do you mean your your ballot or the paper notice?
The. Well, actually, I think it was on the website.
It was on the website.
I think I went to the county website and, you know, going, and I kind of a little.
Yeah.
And correctly, I don't draw, I'm not trust dropping my. At Doug Creek's, I mean. I understand that there's a thing set up with Doug Creek to for ballots, but, um, I just prefer to do it within the county. And and so, anyway, I did a call on the county and they said, well, that's just some type of mistake, of course, we have the drop box in Norwood.
So make sure that's fixed if it hasn't already been fixed, but that Norwood drop box will be open.
Yeah.
I prefer to drop it in the county, I believe.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Easier for us to.
You know, there at an extra transportation step is just not something required.
Thank you, all right. Thank you for the, uh. Last minute conversation about elections.
Thank you for the time.
All right, thanks for coming over.
Will it be updated on the website?
What's that?
That there's a drop off?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
He'll check that out. Okay. So Carmen, it sounded like Grace would give an update later, although I didn't see that on the agenda, did, when was that gonna happen?
Um, I could have it under, um.
Manage.
Our same sessions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay, gotcha, I see what you're saying. Grace?
Yes. So I moved.
Okay, you're you're up now. Yeah.
Where do you want, do you want me to send the hot seat?
Sure, send the hot seat, although then you're sort of looking, if you want to turn around and face the public, you're welcome to.
I'm sorry, I'm like, um. I just have updates, so, so we're, you know, flu, COVID vaccines, um, we're here today, um, I know Doug creeping a little bit more. And that's the whole for public health services, but if there's any needs or you're feeling like you're missing something, uh, please let us know, please let me know, I'm happy to listen and see, uh, what we can do and how we can show up. I know we have a handful of WIC families, so women and children here, um, and our coordinator does a hybrid approach there, but, um, always open to definitely. The other piece on public help for this area is we also have a septic permitting, and that's the one, uh, permitting, I think, for Egner area.
For the county.
For the county, yeah.
State has electrical.
State has electric, yeah, thank you. Yeah. Having there. Um, I do have a couple things that I wanted to run by the commissioners today, just as things have been evolving on the federal side, especially recognizing that, uh, we had the federal shutdown starting at midnight, too. Um, but. In particular. Well, I guess, so there's two things, funding updates as a whole, um, all of our funding has kind of settled as of this last week. Um. Both with the state special session and the executive order that reduced two different line items of ours by fourteen percent. And then some federal changes as well. And so just to call out so you're aware, in twenty twenty-five, we received a little over four hundred thousand dollars in, uh, state and federal funding. And then this, um, yeah, in two thousand twenty-five, looking towards fiscal year twenty twenty-six, which for the state is July to June. So currently, we're at three hundred and twenty-two thousand, um, dollars, so it's about an eighty thousand dollar difference. Thirty thousand dollars of that is due to these cuts, so pretty minimal in the grand scheme of things on cuts. And then one of our funding sources ended for Andre's position.
Hmm.
There was supposed to be additional funding that came through, but just with, um, some staffing restrictions on the C D C side, none of the the funding has come through yet, so we're just assuming we're not going to receive that additional, uh, forty-six thousand dollars, um, for this year. Um, so I just wanted to call that out as it's kind of been a moving target over the last several months. Um, and also that we're anticipating more cuts probably in twenty-six, twenty-seven for the fiscal year as well.
And that's at the state level, you think?
I think federal and state.
But regardless, that means a counting backfill of those, depending on what you recommend and the commissioners authorized, will have to be increased to maintain that service if we want.
Correct.
Grace, that thirty thousand, what's the approximate breakdown between state and federal cuts?
You know? I would have to get back to you, but, um. The the, I would probably say. Fifty fifty-ish. Um, it's our WIC and our emergency preparedness are the federal funds that were cut. Um, and then our environmental health and then our flexible public health funding from the state that was cut. And I know for the the, well, I guess it's a little more than, because environmental health and O P H P, that's the state funding. Um, it was fourteen something and three eight, so just under twenty, so, yeah.
Hmm.
Thank you. Yeah. So just things to consider. And I know we'll talk more about it in the budget season, but, um. Thanks to know that we have some numbers.
Um, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Heads up, um, and I think I kind of expected it to be worse, right? With all the news that we've been receiving, so somehow.
There's been a lot of delays.
Yes.
Just, uh, due to just changes in terms of agreements on the federal side and, uh, some staffing, um, cuts on the federal side, too, so it's taken longer for contracts to come through. But, um, they've all come through, at least for this fiscal year, which is great, I agree, it's not as bad as expected. We did receive, yeah, the state cut, though, was unexpected.
Yes.
And so I think that one probably hurts the most, um, and it's more flexible funding instead of very programmatic specific, um, so there's that. And, um, the other thing on the state side, the state health department's going to be requesting two point seven million dollars from the state this year to upgrade their lab. They've been having a lot of issues with their lab for water quality testing as well as S T I testing, and a lot of it goes to outdated equipment. Um, and so thinking of the state deficit. And the needs for, um, funding as a whole, we're we're underfunded and we have been since like twenty-ten, so it's just, uh, there's gonna be more competition as the tide gets deeper. Um, the big question for you all today, though, is COVID vaccines. Um, and this kind of goes hand in hand, so funding and then, um, the federal shutdown. Um, so for COVID vaccines. All of the vaccine approval process has been a little, um, back and forth in different directions. Um, typically, the A C I P, the Independent Review Board approves fall vaccines for flu and COVID in June, that got delayed for COVID, and they met and approved the vaccine on September nineteenth. The next step is that the C D C director needs to sign off and approve on this recommendation. And then any kind of state organization can access publicly funded vaccines. So that's our, um, vaccines for uninsured individuals.
Do you know how the C D C director, what their plan is, well, if they will approve that?
Um, so it's been about a week and a half, it's typically usually a week to two weeks in which that gets signed. Um, I would note that the direct, the whatever, the director from the summer that was appointed has left, and now there's the interim director. But with the furloughs and a lot of the pauses with the federal, um, shutdown, I would say that we're not really putting any eggs in that basket of it getting signed until significantly after things, um, the government picks back up financially, the budgets get approved. So for me, we are looking back at last year. In twenty twenty-four, fall twenty twenty-four, we provided a hundred and twenty uninsured individuals COVID vaccines. This was provided through the state from the federal funding. Uh, with the cost of a COVID vaccine right now being about a hundred and twenty-five dollars, that would be about fifteen thousand dollars if we were to absorb that cost. Right now, we, if people can wait, we were expecting it to go through in about seven weeks. We're like, if you can wait, we'll get you in October. As soon as we know more, we'll make it available. But that, that seems like a large number financially when we knew it was cut, right? But now, recognizing that it might not become available until November from an equity perspective, from a health risk reduction perspective, I, I'm really grappling with what is the best approach. And so that's kind of where I'm coming to you all today to get some guidance to, um, wrestle through this, um, cause it might be that much, right? A hundred and twenty people might be like, heck, yeah. We have many more uninsured people across the county. Um, so that could be a lot larger number, but I feel like general uptake is low as a whole. So, um, yeah, so I guess the question is, what do I do? What do you guys want me to do financially? Um, cause we can go either direction, but.
I have a question, Grace. Do you think that if we prepaid for it, if you will, so that folks could?
Can't get reimbursed.
We can't get reimbursed.
Yeah. The, the tricky thing, it's physical vaccines. The state gets a really deep discount from a federal, like the feds get a certain, like a different price than we do. So we can do something called borrowing vaccines, but that's super complicated, frowned upon practice. Um, for this scale, I don't, I would not recommend that. So it's not like money exchange. It's like physical earmarked vaccines.
And there probably aren't a lot of surplus anyway.
Uh, there, yeah, I think there's supply.
Yeah.
It's just
Okay.
logistical nightmare.
Okay.
Um, I don't need an answer today to, if you, if you all like, but it's, yeah, not quite sure the direction to go, recognizing it might, yeah, might be a while.
Or never.
Or never, or never. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
What is the impact of the commissioners waiting and deciding on October fifteenth?
Um, continued confusion, delay in services and just thinking of like, for us, I think if there's somebody who is high risk that really wants the vaccine, uh, we would give it to them regardless.
Yes.
Um, that's a more than appropriate.
Okay.
Um, one, but thinking of staff discretion, I'm gonna be out for the next two weeks.
Right.
Um, and so, um, I think they're empowered enough to make those decisions, but, um, it gets tricky, so.
I mean, is there a realm where we could pre-allocate a smaller portion of money to fund the next coming weeks and then revisit?
We could do that. I think the only tricky part with that is if nothing changes in a few weeks and we've used up all that money for s- whatever reason, um, do we stop then? And then for those that didn't get it before, right? Do they, are they no longer eligible? Or what does that look like for continuation of services?
I mean, I envision that we revisit it and if there's no movement from the feds, then we
Yeah.
Consider funding the, the program in, in whole.
Yeah. I mean, that would be ideal in my mind, but.
If, if we funded it as much as Grace is requesting and then the feds did come through, then I imagine you would immediately apply for that and then we could stop spending our money. Right? Wouldn't really, that's what I.
As soon as we re- receive the publicly funded vaccines, we would switch over.
We switch over.
Yeah, again, it can't be reimbursed or exchanged.
Mission wearing has its chamber.
Lance.
Thanks. I'm following the same line of reasoning as you, Kalina. I wonder if we to set Grace's mind at ease and to be prepared, order seventy-five hundred bucks worth of COVID vaccines and have them. And then we've got a stockpile, if you will, for folks that are in dire need and that gives us a little time to wait and see.
Oh, so, okay. So we would actually, we'd have to, we'd prepay, sorry, we'd prepay for a certain number of vaccines. Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, we already have vaccines on hand, so we don't need to purchase more.
Okay.
But we can keep track of uninsured COVID vaccine uh, visits and then calculate what that offset cost is.
That's right.
And then too, we've also offered, like, there's some individuals that don't have insurance, but are, have good financial means and they can pay out of pocket as well. Um, so it could be like, cause with BFC, that's the Vaccines for Children program. It's, you know, there's usually an administrative fee and the burden we don't cover, or we don't have them pay it, right? So it's like no one will be denied access, but if somebody can offset it, cool too.
So do you ask people if they can, like, say we did approve this, would you ask them if they could afford to, if they would be willing? I mean, is that an awkward conversation?
It could be, but it could be, uh, it, it's not too awkward. It's just, this is an option. If you're able to pay or make a donation, that's great. And if not, what we do.
Did your, did your staff in your absence have a clear definition of those folks that are high risk and need? Um, that would fall into this category that wouldn't need additional approval?
I would say high risk would be what the FDA approved for COVID vaccines. So people with an underlying health condition or sixty-five and above, but sixty-five and above type Medicare. For the most part, it's just like about thirteen people that are sixty-five and above that don't. So that would be, but it is, you know.
Okay.
What's our current stockpile looking like? Like how much are?
Yeah. They're all privately funded vaccines, so we're just purchasing them from a, um, a vendor, right? Um, I think we have two hundred on hand. Like supply to order from private funding, not a problem. Cause we're paying out of pocket versus the public fund that is provided from the state after they get a deep discount from the feds.
And then remind me how many COVID vaccines did you administer last year? Just beyond the uninsured, just to have an idea of like what we're sitting on and what the need could be.
About five hundred.
Okay.
We did about nine hundred COVID combined last year.
Um, wait, so tell me what you're thinking about in terms of not fully funding the request and waiting?
Um, well, I mean, I was leaning towards what Commissioner Waring was was suggesting is ordering a smaller amount, not that entire fifteen thousand dollars worth of vaccines. Um, and whether that's half, like Commissioner Waring was suggesting approximately half seventy-five hundred, um, but knowing that we're sitting on two hundred vaccines currently, I don't know if we would even need to go that big.
It didn't, I'm not perceiving this as an ordering question. It's more of like if what, we have the vaccines, but if we're gonna administer them, who's gonna reimburse, provide that reimbursement? Is it the county or is it the state? Or from the feds, right?
Right.
We buy everything upfront and then we get reimbursed by insurance to offset the cost uh, of the vaccine.
Sure.
So if they're uninsured, we just don't get reimbursed. Yeah.
So, so rather than thinking about ordering.
Yeah.
Reimbiting, right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm envisioning that as your team goes through vaccines and they're, they're needing to order, then we're looking at what has been administered and.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, what, I think we could commit to a certain amount at this point, if that makes you feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Your ability to do your job, um, and serve the public. And then we revisit. I mean, I think it's really important to revisit what's going on and not miss out on potential federal funding.
Mm-hmm. But, but Grace already said that as soon as the federal funding becomes available, then, um, she would switch over to using that as opposed to our funding. So we're, we would just be providing her the flexibility to use the county funds as needed, as opposed to having to come back and make the same request if and, but we wouldn't.
Unless it was overspent or like close to.
Overspent.
We still haven't gotten
Yeah.
The approval from the CDC.
Right.
Yada, yada. It just keeps getting kicked down the line.
Right.
I would say too, out of those hundred and twenty, that's been like, that's over the whole fall season, right? So it's not, hopefully things happen in the next three to five weeks. Right? Maybe it'll get resolved.
Lance?
Grace, the more that I listen, the more it sounds like we just use the existing stockpile. We cover whatever gets used. We don't have a gap in service, if you will. But it sounds like waiting may give more clarity and trying to second guess isn't necessary.
Say that again? What part, what does that mean, waiting will give more clarity?
Well, it sounds like we are worried about when the CDC director might sign and give authorization and that's unclear, but we're hopeful that sometime before mid-November and yet we want to provide continual service and it's now October, so we're staffed and we are supplied in order to provide service seamlessly through October, I think. If there was a run on COVID vaccines and people are lined up out the door, then that, um, will happen and we'll know. But if there's slow uptake, as you said, Grace, then we'll be able to provide for our citizens that want the vaccine. And maybe the timing just works out to where we have clarity before we run out of vaccines or money. But right now, I just think we can cover this with our supplies and with the commitment that I would make, which is if we end up needing to spend money, we will.
That's where I'm going as well. I feel like I, I can't imagine us sort of making decisions about who we think should and shouldn't get COVID shots. And so, um, I think our policy previously has been that we support COVID vaccines. And so I would suggest that we provide whatever funding Grace needs, up to fifteen thousand dollars, recognizing that if the state money, and then we could revisit if you need more. If the state comes through or the feds or the state come through, she's not gonna spend the money. She's gonna immediately switch over to that program. So it's not like we're we're gonna miss out on an opportunity for other funding if we approve this. And then her team will have that assuredly and we won't have to have this conversation again. So I would be comfortable approving the full amount unless staff, of course, we'd like to hear from you feels differently, like we don't have the cash or.
No, I think we can bear that.
Thank you. That's very generous.
But that's just me. I don't, I've been heard from the other commissioners, they'd rather do part of it. Is that what you, that's originally what you were suggesting, right?
I mean, that is that I, in my mind, it was like that would buy enough time to revisit. Um, and it, it seems like seventy-five hundred dollars based on what Lance had suggested would be enough to cover the gap, uh, until that three to five week period and then we can get clarity. And then at that point, if the feds aren't coming through with that funding, if the CDC director hasn't given that order, then we could allocate more, more amount. But either way, it's, we're gonna revisit, it sounds like, so.
And I could to, um, either direct staff to send a report of how many people uninsured have received a vaccine in the next two weeks, or I can provide that, um, via email. Uh, when I'm back to, if that helps just to do like a couple of weeks of a gut check of what the demand is, looks like to. Um, just so then you all have a good barometer.
Lance?
I think that the two weeks that you're out, Grace, would be enough time for us to have the barometer and it doesn't seem necessary to have your staff checking in unless there's some surprise. Four hundred people lined up outside the office.
That would be amazing, but, um, it would be a shock. Okay.
Um, I'm, okay. I, I would just like to get this done and just tell Grace that we'll fund it as long as we need to until the feds kick in.
With continual check-in conversation.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that, just getting a, a check-in and seeing, you know, how, how many vaccines are being used and what, what the communication from the CDC is.
Why don't we just check in in a month though? I think by then a lot will have settled out. I don't wanna keep having to have reports and conversations.
If there's no news.
Yeah. Susan, it's your name, Susan. Patty, sorry.
How many reported cases of COVID have there been in the last six months?
Yeah, so there's less, um, point of care testing, right? So individuals testing. We do monitor on late season of the county, the wastewater, um, levels for COVID cases and it's been at a moderate rate. Um, moderate, here it's a little challenging to quantify that per humans. Um, but usually what we see is when it's at forty to a hundred um, COVID copies per liter in the wastewater. Probably like a hundred people in the community have it nationwide. We're still seeing a lot of hospitalizations um, for COVID as a whole. It typically is our infants and then individuals seventy and older is who's getting really severely sick. Um, but it's a mix as a whole. I know that we had a infant, um, in our county and had to be hospitalized for about a week, um, earlier this summer from a couple of weeks, you know, worst case scenario, but they recovered. Yeah, great question.
Yes, Lance.
Patty, in answer to your question, I'm not with you today, cause I've got the COVID. So it's out there.
Did you get your vaccination? Have you been vaccinated, Lance?
Uh, I got the COVID be, just as the vaccinations were rolling out. No, I have just had, uh, the COVID instead. So I guess I'm naturally vaccinated now, maybe.
What is it? Six months? Immunity? What did they say?
Four, six months, depending on, yeah.
Have you been vaccinated in the past?
Yeah. Kind of a personal question.
Yes, do you get COVID? You know, I thought the COVID was magic vaccination and people aren't getting it after they get the shot.
No, it never was. It was just reducing hospitalizations and the severity of the, of the illness. Yeah.
Sorry, Lance, I didn't mean to.
He's a friendly guy. He might have wanted to share, but I just wanted to give him a little protection. Uh, Grace, do you have what you need from us?
I do. That was really helpful and I appreciate you working through that with me. I just wanted to be responsible with our funding and everything. Um, my only other update, which is good news, um, the WIC program, so women, infants, children, um, they receive food benefits, right? All of the clients, um, to purchase groceries and, um, get nutrition counseling. And, um, with the federal shutdown too, those services were parsed out to continue through the month of October.
Okay.
And so there's state messaging going out to all families that are enrolled in the program to be aware that they can continue to receive those benefits. So I just wanted to call that out too, since that was our biggest concern from the public health perspective for services with the shutdown. So, that's it.
Thank you, Grace.
You all, thank you for letting me
Yeah.
Work through that. Okay.
All right.
Is that the same as SNAP?
Yes, or no.
No.
It's, um, different, sorry. But that is, I know Medicare and Medicaid are still maintained throughout this time period.
As in social security?
Yes, yes, social security too. And checks will still be sent too. I know that there's been some confusion there. SNAP, I would, I can text our human services personally answer that in a little bit.
I just thought, read somewhere about it.
I'd be interested to know if SNAP is funded during shutdown. Yeah, that's a big one.
That's, that is a big one. That's a lot of.
SNAP is what we used to call food stamps and that's for more of the general public, whereas Grace was talking about the food program for women, infants and children.
So it's from pregnant to, uh, five years old. So typically people ten or below eighty percent.
Do they have the free bag of COVID when three whole? Because the Morris County does have that.
Through WIC. I, for our human services. It's all weird because everyone does.
I'm tired and I'm not sure. They have to go down to the door and get it. My grandmother cannot get them because she's in San Diego County.
What was the question? Yeah, what was it?
Free diaper program?
Oh.
I know we have some diapers through WIC. It's not like a actual program per se, but I'm curious if human services manage to that, but they do have a duct tape, air cushioning.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. And so, but I didn't, yeah. I'll send one a, an email right now. So, yeah, that's a great question.
Thank you, Grace.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, very much.
I was gonna say, cause we also have parity between counties too for it. Cause it is like really ridiculous to have so many people here in the red. Norwood versus.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'll just be doing on that.
Okay, thank you, Grace.
Yeah.
Okay, um, Road and Bridge, is Ryan online?
He's right here.
Where is he? Hey, he's snuck in.
Yeah, how's it going, Ryan in the Road and Bridge? Um, an update from us, it was, uh, submitting his projects down in the slip rock area, also around here. Um, and so it's just, just routine maintenance on the roads this, this, this year. Uh, we did get some feedback from the community on, you know, some of the other roads, if there was, you know, repair reports or anything, or if there's, if there's calls and guys are, you know, welcome to stop by the shop there and talk to the guys. We, we have a full crew there again, you know, we, we maintained that this year. So, uh, that's we're happy about that. The guys we have, you know, are, uh, learning the area, they're, you know, gaining experience and, and so, you know, we should just continue to see an increase in, uh, you know, the quality of, of work out here. Uh, Alan Hatfield's with me. He's the, he's the West End supervisor, so he does the basin, Norwood basin and also the Edna area. Um, next year, we're gonna be doing a regravel project on F four W. And we're gonna be resurfacing, replacing the gravel there. And we're gonna be resurf- resurfacing, replacing the gravel there. We'll still be doing spot graveling in other areas of of if there's, you know, puddle areas or if there's, you know. Rough areas, smaller sections on the other dirt roads, but that one's gonna see uh a larger gravel resurfacing project. S eight, we've been doing some work on that, uh removing cattle guard and uh that wasn't really doing anything, so we pulled that out. We're getting it ready for for uh chip seal resurface knocks here next, so we're gonna be doing that entire, that entire length. Yeah, so everything we, oh, Al, he was having a hard time with his cows getting over that one cattle guard. We replaced it with a better one. And so everything should be working. Yeah, out here, the same, everything's going along smooth and and uh.
Is there any chance that uh uh in front of the rural line complex that road, the county road can actually be raised just a little bit? So there'd actually be a a ditch. Where right now water just pours off the old. Basically, basically, when they, when they uh. When they, when they did that uh mine restoration project.
Yeah.
Three years ago or something like that, they actually ended up moving. One of the tailing piles came a little closer to the county road. Well, to where there's really no longer a place for the ditch, plus the, as you know, the. The gas pipeline runs right under there and so I can understand you all not wanting to dig very much in that ditch, so it's still no ditch. And the only way I could see getting around that is if the county road right in front of that. Problem area could actually be built up like a foot before you chip seal.
Yeah, we that raising the road wasn't the plan, but I know what you're talking about. So the the. The Department of Energy, they had their contractors put actually was the detention basin there and so that's it it. They removed all the tailings and they put it in the repository and then so that that detention basin, it slopes out a little bit further. Um, we are actually work with with uh DOE, they're gonna have some crews working out there in the rural line if they're not already out there now. But then also in the repository, Alan and I were looking at that this morning. Uh, we're gonna be working with them, doing some stuff, but yeah, we did discuss that when the crews were in there. We lowered that and we lowered that shoulder and we regraded that road going up. To slope everything is that that road, the way it was graded, it it, anything coming off that road went onto the shoulder and it was building seven. And so we removed all of that, we re- we re- regraded the road so that uh. So that everything's gonna drain, should drain into the, into the, uh, along the shoulder and down. But yeah, that's a, that's a tough section. Yeah, if uh.
There's not much you can do, what, that's to me, unless you can actually raise that like a foot. There's actually a little bit of a ditch on the, on the tailing side.
Yeah.
As compared to no ditch.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we we could stop by there and look at it. I don't know. If we raise it, we probably have to raise it for a long ways, we might end up causing water to cross.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm thinking more like um from where uh. Is it uh? Tennis, where tennis, where tennis, it takes off uh to where the uh cattle guards, there's the uh. Call down by the cattle guard.
Yeah.
Um, so what, that's like. A hundred, a hundred fifty yards, maybe something like that. It's probably a little.
Ryan, are you gonna stick around for lunch? Cole, why don't you and get with Alan and and uh. Ryan over lunch and see if you can work something a little more thorough out. Does that make sense? Thank you for that suggestion.
Yeah.
Is there any other thoughts on Road and Bridge to share with Ryan? How, everything okay out here?
Did you send out a dose or when they, when N five blocked off?
Oh, was that, did we go out there for N five or was that uh? There was a big.
The thing I came in, it blocked the road off.
Yeah.
I was gonna go in there for that.
That was earlier this spring, right? This area, this area this last winter and also this summer, you got, we've been getting a lot of raids over here. Fix it, we fixed a lot of roads every time. Yeah, the basin and drunk, you know, the disappointment area. We've been uh having to repair those roads, but they've been getting a lot of water out there.
Yeah, yeah. Darlene?
We've got block boards, um six H N.
Yeah, yeah.
We just got some rain and I mean, it's horrible.
Okay, yeah, it um, I I, you sent the email, I forwarded that to Alan. And uh we've had, we've had the, the crews from Edgar for uh. They were doing the spring projects, all the, all the crews for the West End kind of team up. To uh to get projects done. This summer, we have some projects over the Norwood area. But everybody, we're, we're done with our major projects, so everybody's kind of filtering back into their districts. And we're, and so you guys will see, we're gonna be mowing again and grading again. Yeah, that's, that's gonna be continuing on, you know.
As soon as they get two months on that, they're gonna come up and.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're doing some drainage projects on Q one down by Cole's driveway too. But we were working with uh, was it uh? Not a can, the gas, the gas company that owns that property there to get some drainage juice across when we get the water flowing into the river, not. Down along. So, yeah, we're still working with, with a lot of those providers and stuff, yeah.
That sound good, Darlene? Okay, you're on it. Thanks, Alan. Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah.
And they'll be here for lunch if you wanna talk more, more specifics, more ideas. Um, anybody online? Nope. All right, so that actually covers the reporting part of it from the Clerk, Public Health and Road and Bridge. But we are here to hear whatever else is on your mind as well. Water dock, tell us about that.
They still haven't fixed where you can put the hoes in on the bottom and get it to fill up with the fire truck and stuff like that. Still fix that.
Mike, are you making notes?
The other day we were out here and filling up a tank and you can find it on the cameras. We had a flood because we couldn't turn it off. We finally went and turned the power, we did everything to finally get it to connect back and turn this water off. And.
And is that a Monazuma Water Company maintenance thing? Yes, okay, and did, had you let us know about that before, Darlene?
I've had it. I seem like I'm always gonna say something. It's just like the hose that they keep. Pulling the thing up so that the spout goes down into their tanks.
Yeah.
Which is a safety hazard, you know, um sanitary.
That's a user, right?
Doing it. So they've got a monitor of their camera because they've done it. Twice now, but they've come back, fixed it, and they done it again. And it's just like one thing after another, the way leaves it alone.
They don't.
Sign that says you're on camera, smile.
Yeah.
Something, so they'll quit.
That's not a bad idea. A sign that says that the, they're being mo- video monitored. Mike's making notes here, all right. Um, Darlene, please let us know if there's a problem, because otherwise it'll just persist, particularly if there's a maintenance problem that we can get on. I mean, user. Error, use.
Bad because.
No, 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 don't feel bad. We count on you to be the voice of this community or one of them so that we know what's happening here, because we're not here. Yeah.
Yeah, about two, maybe one and a half weeks ago, I noticed that. Many users that day of the water dock, they had a hard time with water not stopping.
Yeah.
I mean. There's one family that just got so.
They took the sign down so that you can't follow.
Oh, that's no good.
Google Monazuma Water, you give.
Okay, okay. Anything else about the water dock? This is very important.
From the last meeting, you guys asked about the kiosk and the step and so we had both of those. Darling, we picked up the kiosk and mounted it on the water dock and we did have the guys put a step in, so if that. Step isn't working or if it's not, you know, but it should be better than what it was before.
So can we add just one thing to it?
Go ahead.
There's a lot of elderly people out here. Can we put a, some kind of like handrail?
Handrail? Do you get up there? We'll look to see, yeah, yeah, what we can add there.
That would be awesome. The steps wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
And the kiosk. I'm loving it.
For the posters. Fantastic. Thank you, Ryan and Alan. See, tell us what's going on. We can, we can work on it. Thank you. Water dock. Mike's already on the conversation with Monazuma, I can tell. Um, anybody else have a, yes, Darlene, please, what's that?
The fire department and probably gonna have to visit through the state. But when we pull out onto the road, nobody can see us.
Yeah.
They can't see us with their lights on and stuff like that. And we have quite a problem, but if we could get a sign and a blinking or something like that that activates. There's gotta be something.
When the fire engines coming out?
Or just when any vehicle's coming through.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you're talking about some kind of a blinking light for people pulling off H one onto one.
Well, I'm speaking in fire department because we've had problems several times. We've had, you know, part of the busy season this year. And nobody knows that are just going on the road with the fire departments here and we get a notification, something saying that, you know, fire department.
So she wants a a sign on one forty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the heads up, you're passing the party from.
Right, and that would be in both directions, Darlene?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I noticed that this morning, just I was walking down H one and came across the road and. Some vehicles were coming through so fast and there's not really much of a line of sight at all.
Yeah, even fifty's pretty fast if you're trying to pull a truck out. Yeah, for a vehicle.
A couple of times, they're just close.
Close, close, okay. Um, Mike, is that something we can talk to C dot about?
Yes.
We, the royal we, thank you.
I appreciate that.
Can you remind me your name? I feel terrible. Sorry, hi.
I know that H one, we have a lot of people that come. Uh, Utah. And other places to come to the water dock. And they're coming in, getting their load and driving down H one. A lot faster than forty miles an hour. Everybody drives that for, I mean, I've seen them go by my house. I'm in the first house on the right there. And they're doing eighty, ninety miles an hour. By the time they turn this corner, they're hitting that accelerator. All an ass.
I could, my dog got ran over, which my dog was going out and chasing a vehicle. And he's okay, but if it was one of my great, great grandkids, that concerns me tremendously.
Absolutely.
And I did call the sheriff and talked to them, maybe supposed to put some signs up to slow down. I've got signs in front of my house that says slow down.
No, and you have to come out some.
We did, we did help our, because they're, our, my person, I'm on.
Your signs that are, and you have them on your property, yeah. Interesting. What kind of signage Ryan and Alan do we have there right now? Do you know? There's probably a speed limit sign. And the speed limit is forty, yeah, but people are going a lot faster than that.
So it's like, you know where your, where the homes are. See, you do, I do slow down through that area. And I'm not feeling some kids on that road.
So one, so one of the um things that we've done in the last few years and we've, we've added uh. So some traffic cameras on the roads and we have one that's, that we put up on H one. And uh we've been sharing that data with the sheriff's department, so we can share that data with H one. Uh, on the traffic cameras, because it picks up the vehicle type, the direction of travel. And also the vehicle's speed, the time of day, all that stuff. So we can say, if, if there's uh, you know, specific times or. You know, you know, where they're, they're traveling faster, like eight o'clock to nine o'clock in the morning, for example, then. It then it helps them so they can increase their patrol presence. But but ultimately, yeah, it is up to the sheriff on how, you know.
Yeah, and I know that we don't have that many officers to patrol our area.
Yeah, yeah, we we can.
When you see people. I turned one in several years ago because they were flying down the road and I could hear them two miles down the road in front of a cover. And our neighbors, the Geisingers, was passing across the road. We had flash flood come across our road, which about a foot deep. And they punched across and they, they lost their load of water. Into the dip, into, and no footprint in the other view. I did call the sheriff, the Morris County came out.
Yep.
I said, I'm, I want to talk to.
You knew who it was?
Yeah, the same vehicle.
Still drives.
It still does it.
Yeah, he still drives eighty miles an hour in a water truck, um, full of water, a trailer full of water and it's a big tank.
Is he a Utah resident or a Samuel County resident? Yeah, okay.
Did he get the water free then?
No, no.
So it sounds like, Ryan, um, you can share some traffic data with the sheriff.
We'll share.
From H one and then may, maybe he'll come out every now and then during those peak time.
And what about signage? Is there any way to get signage to. Warn travelers of that it's a residential area and.
I think this speed, the first speed limit sign here is gone.
Okay.
I think, because there's the pole with the little um solar pad on it and there's nothing below the solar pan. There's, there is a forty mile an hour down by my house. Well, there used to be one up here. And I think it's gone.
The pole with the solar panel, that's our traffic, that's just the traffic. Well, yeah, we'll, 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 we'll check that.
Because I, I didn't notice it. The other day when I went by, I was thinking of that.
Okay, yeah, we'll check the, we'll, we'll, we'll check our signage for you. We'll, we'll drive down today.
Thank you, Ryan.
See, yeah.
And then Galina, you were suggesting maybe something that says like congested area or.
Yeah, I don't know what standard or customary, but some sort of signage just. Especially coming from the west, you know, to.
Yeah, u- usually with the signs that either indicate it's gonna be. A regulation or regulatory speed.
Right.
It's gonna be a specific hazard. So if there's a dip or if there's, so a, a residential area is not technically. A specific hazard, it's just, you know, and I think all of our road statutory. There, you know, as a county road, unless it's a, you know, industrial area, then uh. You know, or if there's a, a business there, you might see trucks crossing, it's like we could identify a specific hazard. So that we don't, I don't know if we have anything to say, you know, that would be a custom sign we have to make to say residential area, area, I guess. Yeah, most of the time, you know. The fewer signs tend to work better than a whole, whole bunch of signs, because when you get a lot of.
Yeah, exactly. It just sounds like.
White on the speed. There's something that says, hey. Oh, as soon as they turn this corner, they're gone. And they are, I hear of this, you can hear it from my house, the speed limit. And they're just taking off.
Ryan, what were you gonna say?
I was just gonna say, I know, listen to the group in the past, you guys have talked about some commercial vehicles that use it also. And so that was something I was talking to Helen about, especially with that section of H one where we have. And soft, um, and so. I know in Utah, they do have a weight limit, but that's something that we could discuss with the commissioners also is uh. We're waiting them on the, on the vehicles, so. What's that?
We talked about that in the last commissioner's meeting, that we put, we're, we're putting a weight limit sign up on that road.
Well, there's one in Utah, but we, we would have to do that by, by uh. Orders of resolution, we would have to specifically regulate that.
Well, I mean, the guy with the water trailer with the huge tank on it, not that he's off a weight limit. Once he fills that up with water, that sucker.
And he pulls two big tanks. He's got a big semi.
Oh, he has a semi truck that he hauls up with?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think the U Cola Road has a thirty ton weight limit on the U Cola Road, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, that's all of H one, isn't it?
No, there's no.
Oh, it's the U Cola, it's between Colorado and Utah.
Yeah.
And U Cola Road.
Yeah, U Cola from.
Is there, is a thirty ton weight limit, you're saying?
Yeah, so we don't have that here on each one.
And would that be appropriate, do you think, or or is that, is it the weight of, is it the commercial trucks or is it the speeders that are the issue?
The speeders are.
No, it seems like the commercial traffic has stopped a little bit. Somebody must be done with.
Lot of, lot of truck, logging trucks.
Okay, so that operation may have wound down.
Yeah.
Um, well, do you all feel comfortable if, if, that, with Ryan's um idea of sending the data to the sheriff's office? And seeing if they could come out every now and then during busier times?
Yes, absolutely.
Darlene?
If um it was more. Um, out there in the public, a public notice that this is going on and it's being monitored, you'd see some kind of a change. Not if.
Yeah, how would that notice go out? Yeah, if they're coming and going from Utah. Posted at the water dock. That's a good idea. Monazuma. Well, I like that idea of putting it at the water dock, maybe a notice that just says, you know, please. Use more caution on H one, it's a residential.
Well, the speed, you know, there's a public note that it's being monitored by camera. It's state cameras. It'll make a difference.
Well, that's about the water dock itself, right? I don't think we're monitoring the road with a camera.
I mean, that he is, that with that, that is a monitor.
Oh, do you have the, you can see the vehicles specifically?
See the vehicle. It just picks up the type of vehicle. So whether it's like the size, it'll say small or it's like medium or large truck.
It's a lot of license plate.
Right. We could probably work up some kind of a notice for the water dock that says, you know, there've been concerns about the speed limit on speed on H one. Please use caution. It's a residential area. Speed limit is forty. Maybe something the county is, I mean, we can't say we're videoing it, monitor. We could say we're monitoring it. We could say that and, you know, please.
Community watch place. You know, we have a community watch.
Mike likes that?
What, what I don't want to think is I don't want to think that our traffic cameras are going. Yeah, we don't want to.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Yeah, there's a young man that parks his car at schoolhouse. When he gets off the bus, he drives home. And he flew my husband off the, just went around him. About stopping the next time, he's, you slow down, we've got kids.
Yeah.
And I was a teenager. And he's been very good. He has slowed down.
Well, so, so to the point of the neighborhood watch, I don't know if we want to go to the point of being organized enough to put a sign up, but um, is it, I don't know how this works legally, but can citizens call the sheriff and say this particular person is speeding and then have the sheriff speak to them?
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
You get that, that, that happens all the time. You hear, I mean, people call nine one one and turn in drivers while they're driving down. They'll put out, you know, a lookout or, or they'll send down information about a specific vehicle. And if there's any deputies or any, any uh, uh, state patrol units that are in that area, they'll look for that vehicle and they'll stop and we'll talk to them about that. So if you have, but they, you know, they need a license number or vehicle description. If you can get, get that, then you can call and, and turn them in.
It kind of works.
Yeah, well, at least they have it on.
I had my vehicle broke, uh, gone into and they had it started nine o'clock at night. I stepped out, the light came on. And I went back in, making sure everybody was where they were supposed to be in the house, changed my shoes. Got my twenty-two out. And I hit it up, they have left. But the same vehicle that was sitting there in the dark, I couldn't see it. But I could hear it and I can still hear that sound.
Hmm.
Uh. They left. And I did turn that one in also. And the sheriff said, well, we can send it over. And I said, yeah, but it takes that thirty minutes to get out to the house.
Yeah. Well, I think the idea that we're talking about is not, it's not gonna happen immediately, but if you know of this young person or somebody else who is um, you know, a nuisance and a danger, then that's the time to call the sheriff. And the sheriff can, can reach out to that person and, and give them a, a talking to, if you will. Does that make sense?
And I know that our current sheriff has a really good relationship with uh, the Doris sheriff as well, so.
Just want to have him calm down and reduce himself.
Doits, I just made that note. Yeah, I'm sorry we didn't invite him. He may not even have known we were here. Yeah.
I didn't invite him, unfortunately, he was unable to make it.
This meeting? Okay.
But we're gonna work on it for next spring. So we'll get on the calendar much sooner later.
It seems like only about a year ago, we got a deputy stationed in Edgar.
He's still here. Yes.
I think he moved.
Well, yeah.
Love.
I think that's what I was gonna say. I.
So he left.
I, yeah, I think his personal circumstance has changed. Yeah. All right. So anything else for, for Ryan? Thank you.
And Edgar.
No, no.
Yeah.
So no deputy in Edgar anymore?
Um, but thank you, Doris County is so wonderful.
Responsive.
I'm immediately dead.
That's great.
It'll be your best weekend. Fifty, now it's gonna be thirty minutes.
Yeah, I know. I will say that um, the new sheriff is, I believe, fully staffed again too. There was a shakeup after he left, but, or after he, when the old sheriff left. But I think at most he has one position open now. So he's staffed up real quick. And uh, it sounds like some of them are quite experienced. So it's good for the.
Yeah, well, I like the idea of getting data and trying to schedule a deputy to be here in those heavy hitting times to just monitor H one. Um, you know, I think a speeding ticket or two could nip this in the bud. So.
Yeah.
But, yep.
Get a couple of bad ones and then we're gonna get up.
Right. I think that will, you know, carry the message stronger than anything. So hopefully.
Actually see that big semi with the two. Yeah, right. It's, it's the first summer, it's the first year I see them. Yeah, uh, they followed it for somebody else. And that's Jeremy Redshaw's vehicle.
This is the fellow hauling the water from, yeah.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So he would be the one vehicle that you're most concerned about the size and the weight? Or more the speed?
Big speeder.
No. Okay.
There's another guy that has a, a one ton truck and a trailer with a tank on it.
And it's bent, dented on the top side of it.
Yeah, because he wrecked it down by her.
Well, if you can get the um, license plate for that vehicle, is that possible? Then I bet you the sheriff would look into that for you. I don't, I can't promise. Hmm, do you think you could speak to someone in Utah, Mike, or is that?
Yeah, can always speak to somebody.
In Utah, yeah. If you can get that, let, let the sheriff know and he'll probably, he'll do what he can, I know. Whatever that may be, he'll have to tell you, but.
And I look forward to Sheriff Covalt coming out and meeting you all. We've really had.
He's the last meeting? No, no.
No, he hasn't been here since he was appointed. Um.
I don't think we've had a meeting.
But.
He had the last meeting.
Yeah. He's doing a great job, but he's had a heavy lift um, coming into his position.
I'm sure they am.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
New subject for a minute? Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so. Yep. Thank you.
Access planning by the B L M.
So, sorry, say it again?
I'd like to submit you know, about travel access planning, that by the B L M. And uh, so I I have a lot of concerns about where they've been going. Um. I can go into hours of details, but I'm gonna try to keep this within five minutes. Okay?
You go, Cole. You can do it.
Is it? So uh, gosh, they asked for public input in two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand twenty-one, somewhere around there. Okay? I gave them input, gave them input on the road. Okay? Then they changed all the road numbers. Okay? They, they randomly changed all the, well, I'm sure it wasn't random, but I, and I kept saying, how can you follow all these previous inputs? Well, we'll do cross referencing or whatever. Well, the first place it came to things when the county was giving its input into the travel access planning. I provided the county with my uh, letters. Okay. And uh, and I sometimes saw in Star's face a little bit of confusion. She's thinking like, that's the call. Well, I, I only later on found out the confusion was because the road numbers, county would use for grabbing set of road numbers from what they'd asked the public to accommodate for so many times. Oh, so no wonder Star thought the code is great, you. Okay. Uh, you know, my confidence makes sense. So then I continue working with them. Uh, and as of like last summer, they are basically shutting down every B L M road unless they just completely shut it down. They were, were even looking at shutting down the roads that, that the, that the, uh, I think it was a two thousand twelve thousand page of resource management plan of the B L M for the whole area, you know, the larger uh, resource management plan for trace trails. And explicitly said, it's gonna stay open. They're designated road. They must be them. And they said, and I questioned about that. They say, well, just because it came out in the, in the, in the, in the plan, it took fifteen years of public input and planning to come out with, doesn't mean we have to leave it open. Yeah, they were going on and on like this. And then part of what they're saying, they said their input that they understood from the county commissioners was to shut everything down. If the county didn't want any B L M roads left. And, and that's, that, now that's, that's a slight exaggeration, but the perfect example that they, and so their example is all these county roads, why can't we need to de-pump any, any B L M roads? Well, here's one example of a, of a B L M road that I think really needs to stay open. Uh, so five, eight, county road five H N uh, goes down Bishop Canyon. And then the bottom of Bishop Canyon joins into Summit Canyon. Okay? Well, uh, at the, right where the um, so if the county road goes down uh, four miles or something like that, and then it angles up a hill, right there, the B L M road takes on down the box. They said they're gonna shut it right there. I said, you can't shut it right there. There's no turnaround. Anybody in the trailer is not gonna be able to back out. They're, they're gonna be stuck. The, the B L M, they say, they say, we cannot consider any ground distributed activity at all. I say, I say, hey, I did a lot of travel access planning in my career. And what do you do if you're gonna shut down a road? You make sure that it's a turnaround where you're shutting it down. They said, well, we can't do that. We have it from the administration. All we can do is shut the roads. We can't. And it's gonna have to be a separate leap of project to, to create any type of little tiny turnaround. So a person with a trailer could actually turn around. They're saying, I, I, and they're going, well, we can't do that. We, that has to be a separate need for process. I say, so you're, you're meaning, I say, so you mean that you're gonna have people stuck there with their vehicles, potentially with a trailer, can't turn around. And maybe five years later, if you're gonna have it around so they get their, their vehicle back, you know, and uh, the pressure, now I called this uh, a few months ago and they said, well, we're, we're now kind of gonna be getting new process because we now have a new administration with different policy objectives. So a lot of what they were telling me, it's late, it's last summer, is no doubt we're probably not gonna happen anymore. And, and some of these pressures where they say, not on fault, it's, it's a white house, it's the county, it's the, you know, they're putting, they're putting all their stuff in every which direction, right? Okay. Um, and, and so I'm not so sure it's gonna come out with them trying to shut everything like they had been really pushing to shut just about everything unless it was absolutely necessary to have it in. And then they were even only gonna have it be open for somebody who actually explicitly needed it. So as a B L M road, well, when the ranch needs to go in and clean out a stock tank, they can go in and clean out the stock tank, but everybody else is out of here. Okay? And again, one example of a, of a track that I really think needs to be open. So on August sixteen, seven, okay, this for people to be, to do some history. Okay? August sixteen seventeen seventy-six, the Domingo Estelani expedition camped uh, a mile, a mile down of five H N. Okay, five H N, as you all know, was over at the, at the top of um, of uh, Bishop Canyon. Okay? Then on the morning of August seventeen seventeen seventy-six, they continued down Bishop Canyon, what we now call Bishop Canyon, and all the way down Summit Canyon came out to the Dolores River and they camped at the Dolores River that, the night of the seventeenth. About one quarter mile down from the county road bridge at Slip Rock. And so if you look right down the river and that's where the river bends, where it up to, up against the cliffs, that's where they camp. Okay. But that's a pretty, pretty neat thing. Okay, so I've, I've hiked down Summit Canyon the whole, whole way and back. Okay? And the amount of for some beautiful canyon, by the way. Fascinating, honestly.
Cole, Cole, I'm gonna have to just kind of redirect.
Good.
You wanted to talk about B L M roads being closed that you think should be open.
And I'm only, and I'm using this one example.
Okay, okay.
I'm using one second. Okay, so that, my, my Summit Canyon is such that for all the distance that Domingos and Estelani and their uh, eight companions traveled from Santa Fe, all the way, wandered around western Colorado. And uh, they left on July twenty-sixth from Santa Fe, entered into what's now Utah up by Bernal on uh, September twelfth, the fifth on third of time. They traveled through some hellish and beautiful country. There's only one out of all the towns we ever mentioned scenery, and that was Summit Canyon.
Hmm.
And they called it El, uh, El Latorito de Mer, El Latorito de Labrit, of De Mer, who's their, their cartographer. They were so impressed about, they actually mentioned scenery. These people, about all they were interested in was, was this would be a good house side, home, uh, town side. It'd be a great, great place for a mission. This, oh, look, this looks like there's silver here. Oh, there's Gibson over here. You know, that kind of stuff. That's about all they ever looked at was, was more like commodity type potential. Only place to call C. So back, back to mine. I hiked down it. And I've been down it a couple of times. There's no resource damage from A T Vs. There's no resource damage from side by sides. It, you know, and I, I've had watershed under my perusal in my life. There's no resource damage, none at all. I report to the B L M and they say, well, we're so shut it. And we're not making a turnaround.
Is this, which road? What, is this five H N?
No, five H N is coming.
Right. So which is the road they're closing?
B L M. Five H N that goes down. So five H N.
So, yeah, so here's five H N, just to give Mr. Brown some context here. Yeah, here's five H N.
Bishop ten.
And then here's the, where the B L M roads start here. Here's B L M road fourteen eighty-four, and then it connects to B L M road sixteen sixty-eight, and that goes down Bishop Canyon into Summit.
Into Summit Canyon. And that's the road that, that um, you, they've closed and you think.
Well, they have posted.
They're talking about it.
And, and it was one of the things they said, they definitely gonna close it. I say, and I, I told them, I wrote both in writing and verbally saying, there's zero resource damage. There's no reason why people are side by sides. Should be able to continue to go down that and enjoy the scenery and be able to look at, wow, this is what happened in seventeen seventy-six. So it'll kind of, one of the first, no, not one of the first, the first expedition into this area. It was the expedition that allowed Spain to go ahead and claim western Colorado, uh, southwestern Wyoming, uh, Nevada, that put them into the, in, into Spanish.
Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I recall the opening of our meeting that you mentioned, we had an eleven twenty uh, timeframe here. And Cole, well, I really appreciate the, the history. I think my takeaway is that we need to contact our B L M district manager and check in on the TAP program, the last report that we were given that was on hold. And from what I heard you say, it sounds like there's a lot in flux. And I thank you for uh, drawing this to our attention. But I am not um, sure that I need to continue with the, the details so much as take this broad overview and check in with the B L M. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, Lance. And I'm wondering, would it be appropriate for Star to have, do you have a conversation with Star? So that she can get a little bit of that detail that you have to share and then can connect with the B L M? Does that sound right, Lance?
It's probably very open, just a general thing that there are, okay, I personally don't use side by sides. I personally.
Cole, Cole, yes, I think this is a very, you, you've given us, I think, the context that we need to understand the importance of some of these roads staying open. But let's, let's um, let's handle it as we did something else, you know, uh, directly with the person who can help you. Um, and we, I'll let Cole know about, or sorry, I'll let Star know um, to be in touch with you. Okay? Yes, Walter.
Just for a second, I probably use that little road more than anybody in this county. All of my guests, I take down Summit Canyon.
Okay.
And I can, I can have a picture show and I fix the road.
Tell me if there's two roads really. Do you still have that?
I went to spring, you know, this is two one nine. But I seen a lot.
It's five H N that goes to.
Yeah, so five H N.
Fourteen eight. Yeah. All right, gentlemen, this is, I think, and continue, to be continued during lunch. Uh, but that's great. We've got the uh, five H N onto the numbers of the, of the B L M roads you're concerned about, Cole, and I'll share that with Star and then she'll reach out and then talk to the B L M. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And the history is pretty interesting. It is eleven twenty, which would normally be the end of our um, of our listening session, but is there anybody else who came with something they want to share?
I have a question.
Yes, Maggie.
Um, when we did, when we did, when we did the trash bin or dumpster.
Okay.
In the crate, um, the person who picked it up left another one. So now we're wondering, does that extra one count for the one that? So now we're wondering, does that extra one count for the one that was going to come in the fall? Or are we still do another one this October?
That's what I was hoping is we could not do one in the fall. The cost for those two bins was over eighteen hundred. Because getting some electronics and every step like that. And so that that's just the way it is. I mean, we. It's not monitored, but if we could maybe do it different next year and make sure we just have one in the fall and one in the spring. That would be helpful. It was just more money than I thought. For Ken and staff can.
So are you saying that the first one got filled up, so it was replaced with an empty one in the spring?
So so what happened is we.
Filled up fast.
Yeah, we did have one in this.
Hang on one sec, Joyce.
We did have one in the spring, and typically they would pick that up. We just do one bin. Um, instead, they misunderstood, and they brought a second bin, so we decided to go ahead and.
Leave it there?
Yeah, leave it there and use it, but it's up to you if you want me to call for a bin this fall or not, but it was.
Is the second bin been retrieved and taken back? Okay, so this would be a year we didn't don't have a fall cleanup because we.
No, it's it was gonna be the first year when they were trying.
Yes.
Oh.
But we did fall in the spring.
Okay, but yeah, yes, we now.
Wait, we did double in the spring is what you're saying. We did double in the spring, okay? Um, I I I don't know what to say, whether you think there's a lot more um refuse that people would like to be getting rid of in the fall? Or do you think they took care of it in the spring because they had that double opportunity?
Spring.
Yep.
So this is gonna be a bonus for us.
Okay.
So, I mean, if it's a budget thing, I'm supposed to, we can wait until next year and then try it in the spring.
And in the fall?
Make sure I get it real clear and thorough.
Let's try it that way, if that's okay. Yeah, that that would be great. Thank you.
Sorry, Maggie.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Oh, and Maggie's like a hero for the bin, watching it and letting it go with our.
Full, but it's full.
Yeah.
So it was the it was the um support or the contractor who brought a second one by mistake. Okay. All right, we'll fix that for twenty-six.
The first one was built up so fast, a lot of us couldn't use it. It was so tall when they came and got it.
Hmm.
And the second one got built up.
Well, then that's, do you think we should um have two bins in the spring or a bigger bin?
I think what we need to look at is hosting a spring cleanup. Like we do in Norwood. That we watch and see what's what's being put in there, what can't be put in there, because that's where the cost is. It's only seven fifty for a large bin, but with some of those extras, um it it was quite a bit more.
What's that look like, uh cleanup, spring cleanup? I'm not familiar.
So it it would be staffed, so we have it similar to the way we do Norwood is, we have a couple bins. Um, and someone is staffed there, and so so someone comes with the tires, you're like, no, you can't bring that. Um, electronics, we would have a separate area that we would be able to take electronics, and then they would be recycled.
Do we do that annually in Norwood?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Every spring.
And hazardous materials like paint are separated as well.
And actually, paint now can go directly to your hardware stores. Um, because you're paying a fee now for that to be recycled.
Oh, when you buy the paint. All right, let's um, all right, so I think we decided we're not gonna be able to do a bin this fall, but maybe if we have a more robust. Um, spring cleanup with some staffing, that would, um, we could also monitor how much is going in.
Right.
Right, and if we need more.
And that is part of our contract with People Action Partners, is correct, so that's something that they could potentially staff.
Hmm.
We need to add that.
We would maybe need to add it and visit that here in our budget cycle, but um I think that is, it's very, very timely, yeah.
Response about it, but it has to do with the land being split up.
Yes.
I wanna know why you guys even are entertaining this guy with this uh.
Right, okay, um, you know what, I I think maybe you arrived a bit later, um, and I had mentioned that we were regret that unfortunately we aren't hearing that here today when members of the public are.
You guys are not talking about the land. I wanna know, because you obviously know that we have a a minimum of, you know, state rich here. Why why you guys even are taking, that guy is such a jerk.
Um, you know what, I we it has not come to us yet. This will be what we call a quasi judicial decision, and so we. Are required as a board of county commissioners to sit in a public hearing with, you know, very specific process to hear that. I don't have the background on it yet because we're not hearing it until October fifteenth. Um, Mike, is it just one second, just one second, sorry. Mike, do you think it's a, do you have the information that you can answer that question?
I was just gonna say, eleven forty-five, we're gonna have Kay Simonson on uh with us. And we can ask her that question about, are they legally allowed to apply for this? My understanding is that, yes, they can legally apply for it, and the county has to consider that. It doesn't mean that it's approved. It goes to the um. To the board of commissioners, yeah.
Kay's raising her thumb and saying that is correct, that it is legally required or allowed, so.
Are legally allowed to be considered.
To be considered.
Doesn't mean that it's lea- it's not a use by right, otherwise it wouldn't even come to the board of commissioners. They would just be able to do it in this. So it is not a use by right. It is something that the commissioners will have to weigh in on, but I think Kay can give us some more details in a few minutes when she's over.
Yeah.
And you missed at the beginning of the meeting, there is information up here about that application and ways that you can weigh in. Um, we were really hoping to have that at this meeting, but the timing of it didn't work out, it didn't align, um, because. It would have been very appropriate to be able to have that come before the commissioners when we're here in Egnar, but unfortunately. The timing didn't work out.
If there are anything, any future land use issues, we're gonna make sure to hear those just when we're meeting.
Um, but there is paper up here. You can get information on how to participate and give public comment. Yeah.
Um, so we'll talk about that with that that subdivision. We'll have Kay answer that question when she comes on. Is Patty's or something more about that subdivision? Or something different?
It's about subdivisions in general.
So let's do that when Kay's here.
Yeah.
Okay, and when when we're talking about planning matters, because she would be able to respond.
Takes the final decision.
She'll she can answer that for us when she comes on. Um, Grace?
I just wanna follow up snap that's ongoing.
Fantastic. Great, fantastic. All right, and did you help Joyce connect with Lanay as well? Okay, great, okay. All right, I um, we are gonna be here for lunch, so we have some more time for informal conversation, and obviously we can make take, you know, we can help you with any issues that you bring up at that time. I do want to, because we have Matt Gonzalez online, move on to item number seven B. Which is a ti- he wants to discuss a timeline and update for code adoption process of the twenty twenty-four international building codes. And I just want to make a note that this only applies to properties that are currently required to apply for a building permit, which we is is not most properties here in Egnar. I asked Matt, and uh Mike and I asked Matt why we need to talk about it in Egnar, and again, it has to do with public noticing. Not a legal part of it so much, but he is about to roll this out in other areas of the county who need this information ASAP, and so he needs to share it now with the commissioners, so.
And there are some pieces of of state codes that do apply in Egnar, so we'll talk about those.
Perfect. All right, Matt, would you like to um hop on your video and audio?
I am here. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. And Matt is our county building official, if you haven't met him.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, we were joking that, I think, of the four times we've. Had to amend our building code, I think we've had like two public meetings. Uh, either myself in Egnar or now you guys listening online, so thanks for letting me take up your time. Uh. And thanks commissioners for letting me get on today. Um, I have a little slideshow to help, a little visual aid here that I'll share. And. Oops, I started at the end, classic. All right, there you go. Can you all see that?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. Um, so yeah, this is mostly a presentation of a timeline and some some information regarding the timeline that I want you all to be aware of. And um. That's that's basically it. So let's jump into it. I have kind of the codes we're gonna talk about um in brevity. And then um at the end, we can have time for uh any questions you guys may have. Um. So again, just as an update, so here's what we're doing today, we're looking for. As Commissioner Brown said, we are not considering enforcing building code in the West End Zone District at this time, so. Put that out there, uh and what we really need from the commissioners is just to know that we're gonna start kind of a public outreach campaign. Um, and I wanted you all to hear this from me before you start seeing like Instagram posts and things like that, and um then get bombarded the questions and then have to come to me later, so. Here's a high level overview. So um, here's our timeline. I'm gonna start with our kind of drop dead dates and then work backward to today. So um, and this will make sense in a sec, so bear with me. So by July first of twenty twenty-six, we are planning to be enforcing the twenty twenty-four international code cycle. So that's like our international building code, our international residential code and energy code, mechanical code, whatnot. Pretty standards and standard and uh traditional codes. We will also be enforcing the wildfire resiliency code mandated by the state. And we will also be enforcing the electric ready and solar ready code mandated by the state. We are going to, by law, have to have adopted the wildfire resiliency code by April first. We have this grace period of three months to then enforce the code, so we're gonna, we're gonna put the. The code package, the resolution before the county commissioners. Uh, and it needs to be approved. Uh, Ms. Ms. Mora was. What requested that I specifically remind you that we we by law have to adopt the wildfire resiliency code by April first of next year. We get that three month grace period to then enforce it by July first. Um, we're gonna bunch the other codes with the wildfire resiliency code. Oops, went the wrong way. What is going on? There it goes, okay, so. Uh, in December of this year, we're looking to have a. I would propose, if it works out, a joint county planning commission and board of county commissioners, um. I suppose a work session would be appropriate. Maybe it needs to be a, for the county planning commission, it might need to be a regular meeting. Uh, statutorily, they they need to recommend. Uh, that the code that we're proposing to adopt be, that they propose it for adoption to you, uh a little statutory twist for us there. So we're looking to have that meeting in December. Uh, before that, where I'm going the wrong way. There we go. Um. So coming up here soon, on November fifth, we're gonna have our second. Uh, actually, it'll be our third board of review review meeting this year. Um, I will have the amendments to the twenty twenty-four international codes prepared by then. For their kind of review and to propose any sort of changes. That we may want to incorporate before it goes to the planning commission and the board of county commissioners for review. A few days before that, I'm gonna have those, that draft finished, so I don't have the amendment draft yet. I don't believe that that draft is gonna look so different from our current amendments to the twenty eighteen code, and I'm not just talking about energy code, I'm talking about. Building code in general, so you know, uh stairs and decks and railings and smoke alarms and what have you. Um, and then. Now, so here we are today, what we want to do kind of right after this meeting and and in the following days is begin this kind of general public outreach where. We let people know that if we look at the beginning of the timeline from now until seven one twenty-six. There are many projects that are being designed right now that will be submitted for permit after our July first deadline. For for enforcement of these codes, and so we want to give people. As much time as we can, which in a perfect world, it may have been even more time. Um, but um. Specifically to the wildfire resiliency code, we need to give designers time to chew on this and to be able to incorporate these changes and and find ways to. Uh, navigate some of those restrictions for materials or for site readiness for for wildfire protection, all that type of stuff, so. Um, again, the whole intent today is to put this timeline before you. Um, let you see it and then um ask any questions um so that we can begin this public outreach kind of campaign. Um. Just a real quick. Um, blurb about why these codes in particular, um, we're gonna start with the wildfire resiliency code. Well, again, because we have to, it's a law. We we have to adopt it no later than April first. And it it has to be enforced and enacted or enforced by us. Uh, no later than July first, so we're starting with that. That's the statutory reference, if you guys want some reading material. Um. The next code in that little package is our Colorado Model Electric and Solar Ready Code. Sorry, Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code. Um, this is not the require, this is not requiring all electric, it's just similar to the solar ready code that we already have. Uh, in our code, it's just a requirement in certain circumstances to provide the ability to convert a home. From fuel gas to all electric if a property owner desires to do that. Same with the solar ready. So again, it's not mandating electrification, it's only providing the means to do so if one desires.
Matt, question.
Yes.
To electrify the whole home, or is that to provide an outlet for an EV charger?
No, it's to it's to provide the um. Like the means to to be able to electrify. Um, the home is as far as I understand, so.
Thank you.
So they they have to provide space in the panel for future, you know, if someone has an electric range, um, and and electric heating equipment, those types of things. Um. So it's, it's kind of like. Just building a bigger closet because you think you might get some clothes someday, sort of, or you don't have to fill it necessarily, it's just you need the space to do it.
I totally understand. Thank you.
Yes, um, we are within the window. If you look at the bottom line of that sentence, we are within the window now. After July first of twenty twenty-three and June thirtieth of next year, where we, if we touch our code at all, which we're doing by adopting the twenty twenty-four codes. We have to incorporate this by law. And then lastly, our our international codes, we call them the I codes, so the IBC, the IRC, these these historic International Code Council codes that we have. Um, adopting those, we want to definitely do that because it's going to put us in alignment with the Town of Tilleride and Town of Mountain Village. Um, also. Um, the twenty twenty-four. Uh, International Energy Conservation Code is about sixteen to eighteen percent more efficient than the twenty eighteen version, which we're on right now, so. Um, there is, there is a benefit to going to a more modern code in addition to us being in alignment with our regional neighbors here. So. What we are going to not adopt is this, what I'm sure you've heard of is the LECC, the the state's Model Low Energy and Carbon Code. Um, that's that's in, that code comes out of this, um. At the second bullet point there, that house bill and now the statutory reference. Where the Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code live. Also, um, oops, yeah, also um created the mandated the creation of this LECC. So we are not inside of the required timeframe to adopt this yet, that that would be July first of next year. So if we were going to do this process again after July first, we would be mandated by law to adopt the low energy and carbon code. We are strongly recommending to not do it at this time. Uh, because frankly, our our co-jurisdictional neighbors here, Tilleride and Mountain Village have decided to wait. They don't have a timeline for adoption of that yet. And very frankly, uh I don't think it would be a good place to put the county in to be, take the leaders on this. Um, as I put in the second bullet point there, there are some significant changes in philosophy regarding. Uh, home size, you know, code requirements based on home size thresholds. Um, energy credits, electrification credits, things that are not currently built into our code that would be. Frankly, it'd be challenging for us to take on alone without the support of Town of Tilleride and Mountain Village, you know, because we deal with. The the same designers and contractors, so I just think it's very wise to hold off. We're we're adopting a code that's more efficient than our current code, which is good. It pushes the needle forward towards our carbon goals. Um, we're gonna be in compliance with state law, and I just think it's wise to, to hang on on this one. Um, the L E C C is in turn, is intended. To kind of. Replace the energy code that we've all been using. So again, I don't want to be the. Uh, I think we'd be sticking ourselves out a little bit if we were to just push, push forward with this and adopt it. So again, we're recommending to wait. Um, and just, we'll work with the town of Telluride and town of Mountain Village to try to. Coordinate. I don't think we'll be in perfect alignment. It's really hard to do that as far as our dates, but I, I do, I would be willing to consider adoption of this. And commit to it as long as I know that they're committed to it and kind of when that's gonna happen, which is to make things easier for us. So.
I just want to say that makes sense to me and I wonder how the other commissioners feel. Lance? Thumbs up.
Yeah, I, I absolutely align with the other two commissioners and it makes sense to let the towns lead the charge here.
Matt, I appreciate that you're working so closely with them on, on all of this. Thank you. As you said, for clarity. To the industry and, and builders and homeowners and all that.
Great. Okay. So, uh, yeah, hopefully if you don't have any other questions, um, I'll stop talking and then hopefully we'll be looking to see those. News and social media and public outreach updates coming soon. So. Thanks everyone for your time.
Appreciate hearing from you, Matt. Thanks so much. So there's a question. Where's that? Ryan has a question.
Question. I have a question.
Brian doesn't get to ask questions. I'm just kidding. What's your question, Ryan?
The counties require you to adopt it and then enforce it. So is that, I mean, that's gonna be enforced countywide?
I didn't quite hear the question. I'm sorry.
I think the question is, will the wildfire resiliency code be enforced countywide or only in the areas where we have building codes?
It's a great question. I know that we as a county building department will not be enforcing the wildfire resiliency code in the West End Zone District. Because the way that the law was written. It's, it's. Well. It's not crystal clear, but it is very clear that whoever, wherever jurisdiction has. Authority to enact and, and does enforce a building code as we do. We, we get to enforce the code. So we're gonna apply our situation out here where we, we. Enforce building code in half of our county effectively. So that's what we're going with. What I, what I don't have pinned down. Is, uh, and I, I did a little research this morning and it was, I didn't quite get to the bottom of it. And I'm happy to communicate with other West End Zone District residents. My, the results of my research when I find them, but I, I. I don't know how the state will enforce. This particular code in areas where there is not like a building code. Enforced. So for example. To the south, Dolores County. They don't have a building code. But I know that like the, like the state's electrical and plumbing code are still. Valid and enforced. It's up to you all, I think, to be kind of on the honor system as far as, you know, it's really easy to do electrical and plumbing work out there and no one's really policing you. But the laws are still in effect. So, um, I'm happy to, uh. Like I said, kind of get to the bottom of that question and provide like an official answer to the, to the West End residents. Um, so that they can know what, what, um, how this law may or may not affect them as well. And then also I think that the other thing needs to be answered is okay, fine. It's in effect, but who's gonna be. Enforcing it. Are they gonna send compliance inspectors? I doubt it. Um, but, but I'll, I can get some definitive answers and get, uh, some correspondence to the West End residents. I'd be happy to do that.
That'd be great. That's great, Matt. Um, and we established earlier in the meeting that we have a listserv for folks out here, um, which I imagine Meghan or Carmen can help you with if you're not already familiar.
Great. Thanks, Ryan.
Alrighty. Uh, any other questions or thoughts for Matt? I'm glad we had that update, Matt. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. I'm not out there with you all and I'm sorry. I was looking forward to having lunch, but I just, I. I have some other things to do here today, but it's, it's nice to see you all on the computer anyway. Have a good day.
Maggie, did you have something for Matt before he goes?
Uh, just minor detail.
Yeah.
Uh, the dates for November, you have them for the year 2026.
Thank you.
Hopping around there. All right.
That's true. I'm fixing it right now. Thank you.
Takes a village. All right. Thank you so much. Um. We actually are gonna shift now. I think Kay is online with us to Planning Matters, item 8A. And in particular, Kay's gonna share an update on the Samago County Draft Mining Regulations. But Kay, before you go there, would you like to address, and I'm sorry, sir, you're gonna have to remind me of your name. Mark Thomas. Thank you. Mark Thomas had a question about whether it was legal, this subdivision application. Mike confirmed that it is. Um, and then there was a follow-up question from Patty about who has the final say on. Uh, planning decisions or subdivision decisions. Is that correct?
Yes.
So do you want to just spend a second or a minute talking about that, Kay? And then we can see if there are any follow-up questions before we get into the mining regs?
Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, um, Matt, you might want to stop sharing your screen. Or we can just keep looking at your slide there. But I'm gonna give you a little bit of, um, uh, subdivision 101. So under state statute, um, the minimum parcel size is 35 acres. Uh, so anybody can create 35 acre parcels by deed. Um, and, uh, or by map that's recorded and, uh, either the deed or the map are recorded with the county clerk and recorder. And there is no county review for those whatsoever. So if you want, if you want to, um. You know, if you've got 70 acres or more, uh, you can just go do that. You don't even have to talk to us. That's under state statute. If you want to create, uh, lots less than 35 acres, you have to go through some sort of subdivision process. Now, full-on subdivisions are very complex, uh, require a very, uh, high level of review. And typically subdivided lands have to be served by some sort of water system and, uh. Possibly also wastewater system. Uh, and there's a lot of other factors that go into that. Bearing in mind that that's doesn't suit a lot of people. Um, and is maybe too big of a, a process for some things. The state allows us to create what are called subdivision exemptions. And, uh, there's a, some latitude for the county to decide what fits best. Um, obviously if somebody wants to move their property lines, uh, they can go through, uh, you know, that's the most common type. Or to vacate a lot line between parcels. Um, but we also have within our code, uh, depending on the location, the ability to create smaller parcels. And in the case of the West End Zone District, which starts on the, um. Uh, west side of, uh, Wrights Mesa, you know, just west of Norwood and goes all the way to the Utah State Line. So big, really big area. The minimum lot size in that West End Zone District is three acres. And the reason that it is that small is recognizing that, um, most people have cisterns. So we don't have to worry about well permits. The state can't issue a well permit on less than 35 acres. Um, but the county has said, yes, it's okay, uh, for you to have cisterns. And, you know, to that end, we, uh, have the water dock there to, uh, make it easier for people, um, to get water. Um, you know, people who are closer to Naterita can go there and get water from their water dock. Uh, there are water haulers. Um, but because cisterns are possible, um, we do allow, um, uh, up to four lots. Uh, can be created. They have to be each be at least three acres, uh, in size. Um, so that's how the West End Zone District works. That's how the subdivision exemption process works. Subdivision exemptions are what we call a one-step review. Uh, so they go to the Board of County Commissioners and that meeting for this, uh, application will be next week. Um, and you can tune in via Zoom. Yeah, the 15th, sorry. Um, I have no idea what day it actually is right now. And, um, because my calendar is just packed through the 15th. So yeah, on the 15th, I can tune in via Zoom or call in, uh, via phone. Um, and, uh, uh, yeah, we, we apologize that we weren't able to make, make the meeting work for today in Agnar. Um, that would have been ideal, but, um, so. Basically, in a nutshell, um, that's what a subdivision exemption is. Um, it's the state allowing the county to recognize that, um, there may be, uh. Land divisions of smaller impact. Um, and really a lot of the intent behind our subdivision rate, uh, exemptions. Are to allow property owners to, uh, use their property best. And a lot of times people want to divide property off for their own family members. Or maybe they need a little bit of cash to help them. And that's what this helps them do. So it's, uh, it's not a. You know, method to go and create massive, you know, suburban style subdivisions. It's for individual properties to create just a couple of lots to address whatever their personal needs are. So that's it. Any questions?
Yeah, on the 15th, where, where can we, where do we go to show them personally? Where's the meeting gonna be held?
So the meeting on the 15th will be in, uh, here at our offices in Telluride. But if you want, um, we, if, if enough people show interest and commit. Um, Carmen will arrange to have somebody at the fire station there in Agnar, uh, with the Zoom connection. Um, and then also all of our agendas always have the ability to call in. Uh, the downside of calling in on the phone is you may not be able to see any presentations, you know, showing any maps. But, um, Carmen also has copies of the application that you can look at. And, um, you know, she or, you know, Mike perhaps can help. Just don't ask the two commissioners so that they're, uh, uh, you know. Open to and impartial when they get to their meeting.
So you can go to Telluride, you can, if we have. At least a few folks that are willing, we're gonna send somebody from IT to come set up a Zoom.
Like this.
Like this.
Yeah.
For folks to come here, or you can call in, or you can zoom in from your own home and.
The time is at 9:30. I'm not sure what time this will be on the agenda.
I believe we have it slated for 10:00. But I can send that out to you so you have information. So what is your?
That's Kay Simonson and Kay is the planning director.
Hey, so. Um, is it then up to the board to make the final decision about the subdivision?
The Board of County Commissioners are the final decision maker, uh, on a subdivision exemption. And then the plat gets recorded in the clerk and recorder's office, um, and, uh, and it's done.
So a three acre minimum for family members, do they have to be living their residence, whoever supplies this, this breakdown on that property?
I think that's an example that she gave. It doesn't, it's not required to be for family members. That was just an example of a reason somebody might want to go through this process. Is that right, Kay?
That, that's correct. We do not have a requirement that it must be for a family member because you can imagine trying to enforce that, uh, in perpetuity. Um, but that, you know, one of the reasons why people like to do this. Uh, often it's because they have family members that want to have their own property. Um, other times, like I said, sometimes, uh, you know, maybe they, uh, need a little extra cash. And, uh, so they know somebody that might want to buy a lot from them. Uh, and, uh, so they divide it. I don't know the reasoning behind this particular one. And I'm not, wouldn't go into it today anyhow.
Okay. Any more questions about that process? We can't talk about the project specifically, but the process, it sounds like. Thank you, Kay.
General question for us. Um, I don't know why, but I, you know, when, when the West End had its own. Building codes and planning and all that established. Um, we were already here, so we went to a lot of the meetings that took place, especially down in Disappointment Valley. I don't know if you guys remember that. Um, but the number 40 sticks in my mind as that that was the minimum size of acres. And here I hear it's 35. And my impression, my, my recall is that, uh. At the time that that was finalized, that decision was made for us. That anything smaller than. Well, 35 now, I understand. Anything that's, that's smaller than 35 that already existed, like we're on a six acre lot here. It was grandfathered in. But after that date, then anything smaller. Had to, um, was not allowed. And so I'm surprised to hear that, uh. It's that the state or somewhere along the process. Three acre parcels are being allowed to be applied for. So I'm surprised at that.
Yeah, we all, I think we all are because we were under the impression that there was a lot size of 35 or 40, whatever it was, and you couldn't go no smaller.
Kay, do you want to just clarify that one more time, please?
So most of the county around the Norwood area, the Wrights Mesa Zone District, and then the, what we call the F-zone, the forestry agricultural and open, which covers a huge amount of the, the rest of the county. Those have a 35 acre minimum because those are relying on domestic wells from the Division of Auto Resources, which has a 35 acre minimum. West End, as I mentioned, can use cisterns. So when the West End Zone District was adopted. Uh, it said the minimum parcel size for a single-family residence is three acres. So if you've got three acres, you can have a single-family residence. You can have two principal uses allowed per parcel because we do allow some commercial type uses out in the West End as well. Those may require planning approval, um, whereas residential, uh, uses don't. And this includes legally created parcels less than three acres created prior to the adoption of this section. Now, I would have to check the exact adoption date, but I think this is 1990. Uh, vintage on this particular part of the code. It could be later. Um, I wasn't working for the county back in the nineties. So, um, but, uh, so. Yeah, there, sometimes people, uh, kind of conflate our different zone districts. It's Wrights Mesa and F that have the 35 acre minimum. That comes from state statute. People sometimes will say 40s because it's easy. That's a, you know, a quarter section of a quarter section. Um, easy math on that, but it is 35 acres under statute. But in this zone district, West End, it is a three acre minimum. Uh, you know, if you have a, you know, 30 acre parcel, you can't create 10 lots. You can only create a total of four. Um, so there, you know, there is some limits on that. But that's.
And Kay, did you say that you felt that the West End Zone District was established in 1990?
Our current code dates to 1990. I'd have to go in and look through all the many. Versions and resolutions to see when the, when we actually did most of the West End.
But it was 1990 or prior?
Um, well, again, I'm not, don't quote me on the 1990. Uh, the West End Zone was created prior to the High Country area, which was created in the nineties as well. Um, and, uh.
I guess what I'm just getting at is that this was not something that's happened recently. It's been this way for a long time.
Yes.
Okay. It's just maybe no one had applied for this and that's why we weren't all aware of it. Jared?
Things have been really quiet out in the West End and, uh. Uh, now we're hearing from a few people. So this isn't, you know, there might be another one coming up fairly soon.
And I, I was just gonna suggest for folks who may be interested, we do have all of our land use code online. And the West End Zone District is section five dash three 20. And the section that Kay was reciting was five dash three 20G. Which spells out the three acres, two principal uses, so on and so forth. Don't have that at the top of mind.
We're saying a long time ago, like well, in the last century. Correct. It requires a one-step B O C C approval for this subdivision exemption. Correct. So that was what will happen on the 15th of October. All right. We will look forward to, Darlene, yes.
Um, how many times can a landowner do this? Are they only allowed to do it once?
Yep. Yep, one.
Come back and do it again and again and again.
No, once you create a lot through a subdivision exemption process, that's it, you're done. Um, you may be allowed to shift property lines, what we do, a property line adjustment. Say you'd created two fives, and you decide it worked better as a seven and a three. We can shift those. So you, you know, you start with two lots and you end with two lots. But you couldn't go in and, you know, in, within those ten acres and say, well, wait, you know, that math, you know, the math works out to three. I'm gonna create one more lot. Once you have used the subdivision exemption process, you can't come back to that well.
Is that per sister? Per land or per person?
Per land.
Per, per parcel, per land.
Yeah, it, it runs with the land. It's not per owner.
All right, um, we will um, carry on now for Kay's review, her scheduled review of the mining regulations.
Yeah, um, so when we were last in Agnar, I did give a little presentation on that as well. Um, just by way of background, we started on this process back in twenty twenty-three. Uh, when uh, we uh kicked off um, our code update related to um, natural resources and renewables. And uh, we worked on solar first, which was adopted about a year ago. Um, and uh, those regulations do apply in the West End. Um, a point of clarification uh on building permits and development permits and land use permits. There are a few things that do have to get permits, and solar is one of them. Uh, so there's uh, solar, data centers, um, oil and gas, mining. Uh, those sorts of things may require, will, uh, may require land use approval, may require development permits, may require, might require building permits. So uh, if you're going to, you know, do more than your ordinary residential type stuff, do call us. Um, but anyhow, we adopted solar, and then we got into mining. And we've had a number of uh, meetings since then. We had some work sessions. Um, and uh, and then uh, the Planning Commission has reviewed these. And now we're looking at a November meeting with the Board of County Commissioners, uh, heading hopefully towards final adoption. Um, most of what we've seen uh over the last several years has been exploration in the West End. Um, we've had a number of applications, some for uranium and vanadium, some for copper, um, kind of scattered throughout. Um, but uh, these regulations also apply to um, mining operations, and then also to reclamation of existing sites that aren't related to actual mining. Our current land use code, the regulations are rather broad. Um, they talk about concepts, uh, but they don't get into a lot of detail. And also scattered throughout about ten, twelve places in our code to figure out what has to be submitted. So what we're doing is creating a set of regulations that are all in one place, and where we very clearly tie our application materials to our review standards. So it's really clear to cross-reference uh from one to the other. And um, you know, we get into a wide variety of topics. Um, you know, how is the mining activity being carried out? Um, how are they impacting our road system? Uh, blasting air quality, noise and vibration, geologic hazards, water quality, groundwater, floodplains, wetlands, wildlife and uh habitat, plants, vegetation, weed management, um, drainage, stormwater erosion and runoff, lighting, um, effects on local government, water supply, economy, housing, cultural resources, agricultural resources, recreational resources, emergency preparedness and response, um, spill prevention, uh, containment, mine waste, uh, and hazards. And then focusing also on restoration, uh, public health and safety and compliance with state and federal regulations. We do recognize that there's a lot of uh layers of permitting uh in mining. Um, you know, if it's on B L M land, you know, a lease on B L M, you're looking at B L M permitting. Um, you're looking at uh Colorado uh Division of Reclamation at Mining and Safety. Uh, you may be uh talking to the Colorado Department of Public Health and uh Environment, uh, state water quality, air quality, um, all those many things. And uh, so we really want all of it to work together. Um, we accept their application, the state and federal applications as our application. Um, uh, most of the mining activities, aside from minor exploration activities, are um, uh, two-step, meaning they go to the Planning Commission for a recommendation, and then to the Board of County Commissioners for final decision. Um, we really focus on the, mitigating the impacts of the mining, so not saying whether or not mining is going to occur. But, but how are the impacts of the mining be, being mitigated in a way that protects the interests of the county and our residents? Um, we are, uh, as we're working on uh going to the November meeting, we're clear, trying to clarify, um, make it clear that recreational mining is exempt. So, you know, if you're somebody who likes to go out and do a little gold panning or sluicing on a weekend, um, that doesn't require permit from us. Um, and then we're also trying to um, uh, work on how to right-size um, customize regulations as people are going through the uh process. Um, and right-size according to their impacts. Um, once we finish mining, we're gonna move on to the remainder of the topics. Um, we still have logging. Um, and we have oil and gas, which is also highly regulated by the state. So getting it consistent, we do have gas wells out in the West End. Um, and then finally, working on geothermal, um, because we do have some interest in geothermal development in uh, in the county. And also the state is looking at crafting some of their own regulations. Um, so that is um, mining in a nutshell. Um, and uh, we're looking at the next meeting being November nineteenth, and uh, I'm not sure, I, I think that meeting is in Telluride, but of course, we have all the uh, online options available as well.
Cole has a question.
Yeah, I have two comments. Uh, one has to do with the small miners. So I read through, is it the September seventeen or September eighteen version that you have online? And I'm gonna say, I think that that's a totally great version for the large companies that have a lot of money, deep pockets, they, they can be all the same, no problem. They're not even good at notes, okay? I, I'm talking the, the amount of planning and documents and this survey and that survey, et cetera. But you know, there used to be a lot of small miners, and a couple of some of the regulations, they basically wipe out the small people, and you end up with only corporations. And a lot of the small miners um, actually wouldn't actually do major mining. They were mostly exploration. And, and they would go look at old mine shafts, and they'd have been pulling some stuff out, you know, and, and getting it out, out the open into the surface where they could see it, things like that. Uh, I've never heard of us mining for jewels and gems around here, but who knows? That would also be a small mining thing. Well, the minor exploration in there says, no, nothing motorized. The person can use a pick, apparently they can use a clevis, uh, as I read it, they could actually probably drive it in the pickup truck. But after that, everything has to be pick and shovel. Um, that's not how people do most things, and, and I would really recommend that you and the county commissioners go back and really look at, are you wiping out the ability for, I'm talking one or two people, one or two person operation.
No, uh, th- that is exactly what was brought up in our last meeting in Norwood. We had a number of, of um, individuals who, who mined just like that. And the B O C C provided direction to the Planning Director to work with them to make sure that their operations could continue without a permit. Um, yeah, no, you didn't, no, you didn't miss it because the way they were written, you are correct, it would have been, uh, it didn't sound like someone could use that kind of machinery you're talking about. And these people helped us understand that they were very low, low, low scale, pretty low impact. They fill in their holes at the end of the day. So that was what Kay was referring to when she said recreational. Even though I know maybe that's not exactly the term, it's that really small operation. It is primarily recreation, and they hope to find something, but that exact um issue was brought up and is being addressed.
So they should have to go, go on some of these old shafts, explore a little bit, haul the stuff out with a machine up front. And it even though makes a tiny, tiny little ten yard pile up front.
Is, is that gonna be covered, Kay? That wasn't exactly what we heard from.
Yeah, no, that, um, so there's a couple of different things. Um, there's the recreational mining activity. Um, so we get a, you know, people that are, um, you know, uh, you know, using sluice boxes and dredging along the river. And there's an area around the uh, bottom of Norwood Hill that's specifically identified by the B L M. And we want to, we want to ensure that people who are operating under the B L M recreational regulations do not have to get a permit from us. We do not want to get involved in that. Um, people going in and reworking um, mining operations, those probably will need a permit from the Division of Reclamation Mining and Safety. Um, so those will come to us. Like I said, we're, we've been uh, working on tailoring our, our application materials. Uh, you know, having a way to tailor application, application materials um, and standards to be appropriate to the scale and the activity and its impacts. But, you know, somebody going in and reworking an old mine, uh, that may need a permit from us. Um, and like I said, I believe it'll need a D R M S permit.
But Cole, not as extensive is our goal as what's laid out there currently. I don't know if you saw the section on waivers. Um, that was, there was a lot of conversation about that because it is a smaller scale, kind of mom and pop operation, not recreational, but smaller scale. Um, we, we don't want them to have to submit all of those materials that are outlined for a larger operation. There is a section there that's being refined and maybe reworked on waivers and how that would apply to the smaller operation.
Good. It sounds like I am one draft behind, so.
Well, it hasn't been written yet. They're working on it. Yeah.
Yeah, this was a discussion that our.
So again, my, my concern is it could, they need a machine to even be able to explore the old, the old uh shaft and in different places, and then to be able to dump it outside, pretty small piles of stuff material with. Okay, I would, my bigger point, or my second, my second big question is it used to be, well, I'm assuming it still is in the state ranks, that for building their tools, gravel as an example, that a person, if they're not for, if they're not, the harvesting for sale, that's one thing. But harvesting for personal use in one's own land, and there's a lot of gravel a lot of places, with all the other types of building materials. It used to be very clear in the state regulations and in the county regulations that the private landowner did not need a permit to harvest that building material. Example, in Carolina's, in my place, we would never have been able to grab with our driveway. If we had to pay the hauling cost to gravel from commercial pits that are fifty-five and sixty-five miles away, okay? But as it was, we were able to gravel our driveway because we harvested our gravel right off our uplands. We have gravel all over the place. Of course, we reseeded and everything like that. But we went for it, we were able to get that done. We didn't have to be permitted or anything. If we had to follow the mining regulations to harvest gravel to our driveway, we couldn't do it. So my question is, is it someplace in there that, that, that it's like it used to be that uh, a person could harvest their own gravel for their own driveway or their house, their own house's foundation, as an example?
Um, yeah, I will double-check that. It, it's, I'm aware of the exemptions for people using gravel from their own property for their own purposes. Um, and no, that doesn't uh trigger um, a, a special use permit for a commercial gravel pit. Um, but I'll double-check that we've got that exemption noted in our definitions.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for your close reading. Cole.
And Kay, when, when will the new draft be coming out?
Well, um, we're going to have our check-in with the um, uh, the Planning Commission on the ninth. Um, and then hopefully, um, you know, by the end of October, um, we'll have the uh, the new draft ready. We have a little bit of a challenge in that we had reached out to the Bureau of Land Management and the D O E to answer some of your questions. And we all know that um, as of today, the government is shutting down, uh, federal government. So I do not, my past experience with government shutdowns, I do not expect um, if, any response from any of the public lands managers, um, or their staff in the near future. So.
Thanks for that update. Any other questions on the draft mining regulations? No? Okay, well, that will, you'll see as our agendas are created when, when um, those meetings are, if they change, um, from their current.
And if you, if you want to be on our mining email list, just email us. Carmen can give you, I'm not gonna recite it right now, um, our Planning Department email address, and we'll make sure that you're on our email list and get notification of uh any new developments.
Thank you so much, Kay. All right, it looks to me like it is lunchtime, a little bit past lunchtime. Um, we have scheduled till about twelve forty-five for lunch. It's now uh, twelve twenty. Um, let's shoot for twelve twenty-five. Let's gobble it down so we can get back to our, what did I say? Twelve forty-five, yeah, twelve forty-five. So that'll give us twenty-five minutes, and if you need to continue eating during the meeting, that's perfectly fine. Um, do you want to eat a one? Okay, that's good. Don't be like a rush so much.
I wonder if really when we want to get from the hell.
Okay.
Thank you for that incredible lunch. Darlie, did you hear us? Thank you. So yummy. Hi Lance. All right, we are back and we have with us, Mikael Matson, our Veteran Services Officer. And looks like we have at least one Vet here.
Two.
Two, two Vets. Robert, two. All right. So we'd love to hear whatever you'd like to share.
Sure. Thank you, everyone. Graeme Matson, Veteran Service Officer, San Diego County, Haverdale County. I have some goodies, some bad news. I'll start with the bad and end it up with the good. I did find one veteran that I got a call from to do a home visit. He's got cancer. And I went inside his home. It was worse than like trash can. There was food, there was, he's neglect. So I ended up asking him, do you think you have PTSD? Have you been shot at before? Anyways, he said, yes, I've been through Vietnam War, but I've never asked anybody. So that was one case that we were able to get a Good Neighbor Fund and pay all his bills. He was without power, without water, without phone service. His vehicle was crashed. So they were able to pay all his bills. And I put in a claim for PTSD. And I put in a claim for PTSD. So that's on the on the on the need side. We're still fined once in a while, once a year, like a veteran, like on the outs of survival.
How did you find him? Or he found you?
Concerned neighbor called me. Concerned neighbor, the guy on that. Yes, I have a neighbor who needs help, dire help, financial help and medical help. So I thank that neighbor for calling me. I guess he found my number on the newspaper articles. So public media.
Good to know.
Good to know.
I have a question. Is there a way that we can get on a list to help other veterans in the area?
We could start with certain things, wheelchair ramps, whatever, upgrades the house, I've completed out where I would like to move on this. I'll put you on. Talk to me after this.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. Well, I've been wanting to do that for years. I just don't know how to get involved.
Here's your man.
In medium news, the government shutdown, the federal government shutdown, but we did get VA payments last night. That's good news for those that depend on it. And better news, 250th anniversary of the Navy and Marines. The Army already had it earlier this summer and it's going to be November 11th. So you'll see a bunch of Marines doing 50 pushups or 250 beers. Ignore them. Don't beat them beers. And so that's that's celebrating. Another thing that's happening, I believe, the Elks is having a dinner for the veterans. I'll be there trying to drum up some more business. They haven't yet given me a date, but they said they're going to establish and they'll have a free dinner for veterans in Telluride Elks. And other, the best news I have for you guys, we've been waiting for years for the GDX to come back. And I've been emailing the federal government. They said at the end of September, we're going to have it done. And by on this meeting, I was able to pull it down this morning. They actually posted it and we have good results, you know. Pass these along for the San Miguel County. This is going to be the 2024 GDX. Compared, that's my first full year that I can report. And I have the Colorado counties. There are 64 counties. And we have the percent change from the last year. We were ranked second to last. And this year, 2024, we're first. We've increased our budget by 16%. You can measure, one of the things I want to caveat, they did not include the veteran population for 2024. So we're using 2023 as a proxy. We went up $158,000 a year. We went from 63 rank in the state to 57, even though we are small. So it's it takes a little bit of effort to get a small county to go up, but we want to go all the way to the top. That is good news. We have all the counties here. You can also see in the back, some counties decreased by 32%. You know, I'm going to hypothesize those, that's because perhaps people left that county, veterans left that county, or we have veterans who passed away in that county, but without the two years of the veteran population. So, you know, take these numbers for the grain of salt. But that is very positive, you know, that I have. And that is all I have. Any questions?
What would we do without you?
And Darlene, I don't know if you had heard or other, you probably have heard, but others, that Mikhail was working for us 20 hours a week. And then we went into a partnership with Erie County where he's also 20 hours a week there. So we were able to bring him on full time. And a better chance of keeping him around for a long time.
It doesn't matter who it is. He helps. That's what you can't even express what he does for a veteran. He's made a difference in our life that I can never tell you.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mikhail, I have a question. Mikhail, how will the government shutdown impact your department and the benefits that our vets are receiving?
So I got an email this morning. 97% of our benefits are are going to be still functioning. They're protected. They're not discretionary. They're mandated by law. Social Security and the VA are mandated by law. So and they also increase yearly with the Corps. But discretionary at the federal government, they're fighting about those things. Way above my pay grade. What I found out, let me remember this email, the 911 for suicide hotlines are going to be open. The Court of Appeals is going to be open. The judges are going to still be working. Obviously, the VA healthcare is going to continue to work. I believe it's some ancillary claims that I got to look into that they're not that big. They're they're getting rid of them. So 97% of our benefits are still ongoing. Are not touched by these shutdowns.
Okay, that's reassuring.
That's very reassuring.
Great. Well, thank you for your continued hard work and the the results are clear, both from the numbers and the stories that we hear.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Deers and Grant Jonas, they know what he's doing.
Who knows that, Darlene?
Deers. It's a form of VA health.
Okay.
And they give you another way to get into the to get on base. The deers gives you the all the paperwork you need for that.
Thank you. Okay.
And they know his name.
They know his name. He's persistent. All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to item 11, manager matters. Now, we do have a fairly, well, medium long list of potential legislative positions to discuss. Did you want to start with that or other matters, Mike?
I'd like to just give a few brief updates of stuff that's upcoming.
Sure.
Obviously, as we just heard about the federal government shutdown, that's not really going to affect any county operations whatsoever. Obviously, we'll monitor as we have human services or other departments that have federal funding and how those may be paused or impacted. And we'll be briefing the commissioners if there's actually an impact to service delivery or benefits going to our residents. Tomorrow, Jared and I will be having a conversation with the state around Prop 123. And then also in the CCI Strategic Growth Report. On Friday, I'll be meeting with the other managers in the Seventh Judicial District to come up with a common, hopefully a common position on the DA's 2026 budget proposal. As it stands now, they had originally offered a 25% or 43% increase in their budget cost for next year. They since received some grant funds and they sent back a singular, they they eliminated their 25% request and just said, we want a 35% instead of 45 or 43%. That's still fairly untenable for the majority of the counties. Luckily, San Miguel has a lesser impact. We're in the we're proposed to go up to about $360,000 in costs. But when you compare that to Montrose and Delta at over $10,000 each, and you talk about that level of increase, and these are all statutory counties like ours that are capped with the new five and a quarter percent revenue maximum capture prohibitions. So there's there's going to be, we're going to be meeting with each other and hopefully then coming to our respective boards of commissioners. So and informing you all together so that you're all hearing the same thing at the same time.
Thanks. And I know you pulled that together, Mike. Thank you.
My pleasure. Monday is the San Miguel Regional Housing Authority meeting at 1:00 PM. On Tuesday, as the commissioners know, I participate in the Elpumar San Juan Council, and this is one of the regional meetings where they'll be in Telluride. So in the afternoon, Tuesday afternoon and evening, I will be with those folks. We'll be touring some of the people that have applied for grants. And I'll report back. As we know, our meeting on Wednesday next week is canceled. And the following Monday, the 13th, the county will close for holiday. And I will be working remotely the remainder of that week and on vacation the following on the 17th, I'll be participating in a State Highway 145 Rockfall mitigation planning meeting. That was following up on the last one after we shared some of the county mapping, ownerships of rights of way where they had originally thought that they could only work on sections of Norwood Hill. I'm hopeful that they have reevaluated and we'll be looking at some of the most dangerous sections on Keystone Hill as well.
And that will be for 2026?
Correct. Starting in 2026 for Rockfall mitigation and safety improvements. And then, that's all I have for now. Jared, you have things?
The only thing I wanted to mention on top of that is that next week, and this is not as applicable for our Ignar folks, but I want to say it. We have our housing code consultation that is underway where we're evaluating the land use code to look at impediments or challenges to developing housing, particularly affordable housing. And we will be conducting next Monday, it's going to be a big day, listening sessions. Our consultants in this effort are want to hear from people who have worked through our land use processes, particularly in the efforts of housing to identify where barriers exist, where challenges kind of present themselves. And so we can kind of fine tune and make that code a little easier to use and ultimately in the hopes of allowing more housing development to occur. Those listening sessions are happening next Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. In Telluride, Monday and Tuesday morning, Mountain Village on Tuesday afternoon and evening. And we did move a location into Mountain Village for those efforts. We have Ofer on Tuesday evening. Then we have Norwood on Wednesday morning still. And I know we're going to work to make sure we flip these things the next time the listening sessions happen again. And then we'll be in Placerville finally Wednesday at about noon. So those are the listening sessions. But in addition to that, the strategic the strategic stakeholder roundtable, or SSR as we've been lovingly calling it, will also be meeting at four o'clock next Monday at the Telluride Library to that focus group appointed by the Board of Commissioners will be kind of focusing on the issues. That group did receive packets of homework to do this week and we'll be looking forward to seeing what they have to say. And if anybody wanted to make a an appointment for one of those listening sessions, half hour blocks are available right now. If you go to bit.ly slash SMC C U C L S, you can make an appointment. And that sounds for San Miguel County Code Update Community Listening Sessions.
Okay.
Way too long, but we're working. I just wanted to mention those because those are some pretty big efforts that we're undertaking with Prop 123 money, which we might talk about otherwise. And trying to get ahead of some of our housing challenges, particularly in the Norwood area and East End.
Thank you, Jared. Mike, let us now address the CCI legislative priorities. So just as background for anyone who may not be familiar, there is an organization called Colorado Counties Inc. And it is the Association of All 64 Colorado Counties. And every year, they prioritize legislation in the for the 20 for the legislative state legislative section session that they either want to promote or oppose. Right now, we have about 25, I think, proposals from different counties all around the state. And so the commissioners need to kind of come up with a position for San Miguel County on each of those proposals. And then on Friday, we will attend a CCI meeting to kind of flush all that out with with the whole membership. So right now we are, you know, coming up with our our positions.
Commissioner Brown, before we get into that, I wonder if we could allow Jared a moment to just remind what happened with our divorce county school bond issue and taxation before we jump into this, because this is, we're going through a hundred page document and
Hopefully not too long.
Specific bills. And so I don't want to lose anybody because this is applicable.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, my apologies, commissioners and everybody in the crowd. I wanted to mention, and this is something that came up after our last meeting in Ignar. There was an issue identified with the Dolores County School District bond levy. And I know we sent letters to everyone who had received supplemental tax payments. And the treasures office sent out supplemental tax statements, and I believe that was in July. Those have come due. We we we're sorry for the error as it occurred, and we made sure that anybody with a supplemental tax bill of less than $10 did not have to get a supplemental bill. But we do still have some delinquent accounts for those. They were advertised as delinquents in the newspaper, I believe, last week. And they're going to go through a second round of advertising. So we just wanted to get word out, if you know neighbors, friends, anybody who may have gotten that supplemental tax statement and didn't address it. We're now going through the process of kind of the regular tax collection method, and we don't want anybody to be pissed unaware. So we did send another round of letters out, and we just want to make sure that everyone is aware that if you got one of those letters, you do have some taxes due. And I know in conversations with Kenny Prezger, Brandy Patfield, she said a few people have paid in the last couple of weeks, but we just want to hopefully get everybody aware so they can address it as possible.
Any questions?
Questions?
I do. I just, so what happened? The school didn't figure out their tax property or?
So the the long and the short of it is the school sends us a piece of paper that says, hey, please certify 10 mils for general operating and two mils for a bot. And those are made up numbers. They give us some other number. And we did not pick up as the county those two mils, like the extra piece that they sent us. So that's when we we understood from the school district, hey, you guys, I don't see those collections. We went ahead and made the school district whole. We went ahead and paid them from the county's resources. And then we issued these supplemental tax bills to collect from those people who need to pay. That way we could kind of pay ourselves back. So and that goes through the regular test. So ultimately, it was an oversight on our part. And we've done our darnedest that way. This year, we make sure to pick up all those little pieces. And and it'll be interesting because this year with, you know, there will be the bond levies that are exempt from the 5.25% limit. There are those general or general operating levies that aren't. And so seems like we're playing by new rules almost every year with property taxes. So it's it's our apologies for that oversight. They didn't need to do it. It was one of those things that we just missed a two on a page.
Yes.
That just involves us for also the Dolores School District.
Correct. Yeah, it's it's specific to people in the Dolores County School District because we we do have the other Dolores School District, just a little further south. But but yeah, just that part of the county, you know, it almost follows the rim of the canyon as you head north. And so this particular neck of the woods.
Thanks for clarifying that. And Mike?
And
Just one question. I don't know if you guys know where that our kids go.
Yes.
Okay. There are shorter, there are shorter people to drive buses this year, and they're having to split routes. Our kids have to go meet at the school here. And so far, I've tried to find out all the routes in Dolores County. How many other kids are having to do it? And I haven't come up with any. So I'd like to make you guys aware of that. We need to have the same representation for our children's routes at Dolores County.
We, Mike, making a note. Thank you, Darlene.
Sorry, I'm prior.
Yeah. That's why we're here. That's right.
It it is something to be said that there is a school district representative that covers this section of the school district as well. So we can we can reach out and make sure. So, we can, we can reach out and make sure that.
We just want to say the same way, I understand people not wanting to drive a bus, but. They bring a bus out and put these kids up at that school.
Hmm. Thank you, Darlene, um, I know Mike also wanted to mention something about solar permitting.
When Kay mentioned that solar permitting applies out in the Ignar Slicknut Rock area. She was referring to the, um, the new solar regulations that the county passed last year. If you wanted to do a small, medium, or large scale system, it does not apply to the rooftop solar. So, if you're looking at a residential solar system, we do permit those, it's free, it's administrative through the building department. Um, and that there is no cost, and it's nearly instantaneous if you want to do a rooftop solar system. What Kay was referring to was, we created, you know, when, when the county first had a large scale producer, solar producer approach. About doing something substantial in the Rights Mesa area. We, we paused and we created better regulations to make sure that people aren't gonna be negatively impacted by these larger solar systems. And that's what she was referring to as far as, yeah, those are gonna apply out here too. They apply throughout the entire county, they apply in Telluride, somebody who wanted to do a larger scale solar system. I just wanted to make sure folks knew that so, uh, rooftop solar is free and it's through the county. And it's a very quick and easy one step administrative permit.
Is there any, I said exactly that you're aware of, that requires that, that is trying to do that dark scale?
No, we have not received any applications, mine not.
Okay.
With that.
So, back to the CCI legislative priorities, as Mike says, it is a hundred pages long, but. I think we've all reviewed it ahead of time, so we can hopefully get through our discuss- discussion and decisions fairly quickly. Oops.
And what I would propose, um, I, I think I made a suggestion of how we could expedite this process previously. I don't want to necessarily hopscotch around because I don't, I think it's gonna be hard to jump back and forth. I would like to go in order and just say, you know, the bill title, um. Whether or not you want, we can give the additional brief description of the bill or that is being proposed. Um, but essentially then, if we, we would think that this would be something the county would want to oppose or support. And then if you guys are in general agreement with Commissioner Waring online as well, um. Then I'd like to just focus on those that we want to discuss further, so we could earmark those. And come back to those ones that are gonna require more discussion rather than having a lengthy discussion on.
I think that's great, um, one thing I would say is some of them I don't have a strong feeling about. And, um, oftentimes CCAT, which is another organization of Colorado counties. That is more aligned with our, you know, size of our county, the politics in our county, they will often have a position. And they will share that with us as we go through the day, so I think there may be some we don't have a position on yet, I don't know, but maybe staff does, so. I, yeah.
And I don't have very firm suggestions on any of the, or very few of these.
Okay.
Um, but, and I just want to also note that there were two different versions of this master table of legislative priorities. There was a September fifteenth version, and then an updated version on September twenty-second. And I'm working out so version from September twenty-second, that's the most recent.
Me too, and there was also one that came out on the twenty-sixth, and, um, I noticed one thing, one proposal had been withdrawn. And I'll, I'll mention that when we get to it.
Very good.
Oh, thanks, cause I have the twenty-second version.
Okay, me too, yeah, but I still, yeah.
Yeah, um, so the first one was election signature verification process, and, um. This is from Prowers County, wanting, uh, their ability to hire rural, uh, rural counties that bipartisan. Team of election judges reviewing ballot signatures, um. It would require the pa- the counties to pay for this if this were, um, law. And I don't see that this is necessary for us, but happy to hear a contrary. Time for area opinions.
I agree with you, I think the system we have right now works great.
Yes.
Yeah, and there's always by, there's. Election judges that represent both parties.
Yes, we have observers.
Yes.
On both parts.
So, I, that system itself makes me feel that, you know, it's, it's, there's oversight, and it's, and it's bipartisan.
Very good.
If, if I may ask, you, I, I assume the commissioners will, will pick one of the three positions.
Yeah.
Like oppose, support, or neutral.
There you go.
It can just, I, I don't know if this one, I feel a neutral coming here, um, or an opposed, but.
This is an opt-in, so I think I could be neutral on it, except that. Um, CCI is saying that they don't think it will pass, the Secretary of State is not in favor of it, so. I could go towards no, in terms of CCI prioritizing it.
The other thing that I factor in is from the CCI staff is their time commitment to this. And I'd rather them focus on bills that are gonna be more impactful to San Miguel County. Rather than spending a lot of time on something that we don't see as an actual problem. That's why I was suggesting oppose.
Okay, so Lance and Galena, how do you feel?
I'm fine too, opposed.
So, we'll go with an oppose, now CCAT feels a lot differently, and they provide some persuasive information during the conversation, um, then.
Your prerogative.
Exactly.
And so, you're, you're not making an actual vote today, you're just saying how you're leaning at this point.
Perfect, yeah, and, and before we dive in here, just to remind us of representation here. Commissioner Waring is gonna take the morning, and I'm gonna take the afternoon. And Lance and I can hash out the details of where that, where that happens, but.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Twelve oh one, Galena, twelve oh one.
Okay, twelve oh one, it is, that's fine.
Permitting counties to publish legal notices in non-periodical newspapers when newspapers with periodic. Permits are unavailable in a subject county, I think that that makes a lot of sense, I would urge just to support that.
I'm a yes. Yes, Lance, you okay with that?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm just taking an extra moment to make sure I note. Okay, next one up is protection for election officials from political violence. And this is due to, uh, threats and violence against election officials. We've been seeing and hearing this, uh, as a big issue around the state and the country. Um, luckily, it has not been a big issue for our county, but I think that, um. Increasing, uh, the, the fines and the penalties for folks that do make threats. And or do create violence against election officials is wise.
Very much support that.
I am a favor of this as well, um, and, and however, I read about staff feedback. That they feel like this will be opposed by the ACLU, um, because of First Amendment issues. So, I was gonna suggest that maybe we see what CCAT, what those counties have to say. Um. I do know that the woman who proposed this, Jessica Campbell from Arapaho, is an attorney and really smart. So, that, I'm not just, I just. Went both ways on that. Should we say yes, Lance, and then see how, yeah?
I would agree with you, Anne, that we could take a neutral stance on this, and I don't say that because I disagree with the concept. But because reading the amount of energy for CCI staff and the possibility of legal challenge. It just seems like it's a big rock and a big hill. So, I'd rather sit back and see if it gets momentum, or if folks realize that it may be. Um, not worth the effort, too hard to, to accomplish the goal.
Excellent, neutral.
Neutral, and, you know, that's where these meetings, you really get a very good sense from the conversation of, you know, more than we can get just here. So, you guys can make that call, but for now, we're neutral.
Okay.
The next one up is electrical inspector flexibility for small local governments, and I know that you received an email from our, um. Building official Matt Gonzalez about this as well. And he had some concerns about what the, the test that folks would be able to have to take. Is not that of, um, true electrical inspector, and that this could lead to less. The, less standardized application of our electrical codes and or more dangerous wiring being permitted. So. I thought that we might oppose this, but I also had a question for you guys.
Mike, I got a text from George Marlin, the sponsor of this, and it's a little garbled, but it reads. Clear Creek is going to ask to, for table two. Or maybe it's take two on our electrical inspections concept, it's not ready, but the further we dig in, the more we think there is an improvement to be had here. Um, so I think what I'm interpreting is that they're gonna table this as a request.
I think that might have to do with prioritizing, I don't know if it's going away, it sounds like maybe more work. Uh, you know, like more, more refining of it, so should we say, say neutral on this one, and then see what the discussion brings?
Let Mike finish his thought, but I'm neutral right now.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I don't know if I had another thought, Jared does.
I, I was gonna say, the only other thing I think Matt mentioned is. One of his concerns is that if we find another system for electrical inspection, the state would then just. Be absent or eliminate their electrical inspection.
And that will be.
And so, that, that was Matt's concern, is if we, if we make another avenue for this to be done, and the state retreats from it. Right, he, he doesn't like the idea that less that, you know, that the state eliminate that, uh, whole program.
Service, and we'd have to do it.
Right. Um, so, I, again, I think it's great to hear that maybe they're going back to the drawing board a little bit. And that they could flush this out in a way that. Could get a little more support, cause it seemed like in my conversations with Matt, he was like, okay. But if they eliminate the other side of the program, he's not.
Right.
Neutral to oppose. I'll follow Matt's, Matt's instincts here.
Thanks, uh, you guys see how that conversation goes.
The next one is an opt-in provision for Frontier Colorado Counties to use a different, uh, consumer price index. When determining elected official salaries, and this is coming from Mineral County. Um, I do believe we, we do fit into the frontier designation of two people per square mile or less as a county total. And, what's that, no, six, six, thank you. Um, this would allow them to vote to pay themselves lower, which, um. I don't see as a problem, especially for counties that have, um. Financial constraints if they're commissioners, I know that, um. Back when I was a commissioner, that was a lot of, you know, we're in a hard budget time. We asked our staff to take a reduction in pay, and we wanted to as elected officials, but we were prohibited by state law from doing so.
Yeah, when I was at the CCI first meeting that went over this, they were saying that currently they have to use the Denver CPI. Which in a certain year they quoted as four percent, whereas the Frontier County CPI was like one or two percent. And they just felt like it was more than they needed and more than they could afford, so it's an opt-in, I, I think it's something worth supporting.
Yeah, I, I definitely support this, and just having discussions with other commissioners from small frontier counties. That don't have a resort economy and, uh, a similar tax base to what we have. And just talking about their budget constraints, I really saw those concerns firsthand in those conversations.
The other thing is that there are many counties where their commissioners don't work during the, they have other full-time jobs.
Yeah.
And they just attend their commissioner meetings, so they're not doing the same level of work as perhaps you guys or other.
Interesting, so they choose to just pay them less, it makes sense. Uh, the next one has been, uh, pulled out, the one about, uh, entertainment district.
Okay. Thank you.
The next one, but.
The next one is for, uh, EMS and, um.
Yeah, it's to have, um, EMTs and EMS individuals, uh, designated as essential workers. Which, from the meeting I attended, that the idea is that it would help with grant funding. Because they were not just individuals, but essential workers, we'd have more grant funding opportunities.
Yep.
I don't have a strong feeling about this one.
I didn't see any downside in supporting.
I, I could, just in our county, I could see this really coming into play for Norwood Fire EMS.
So, yes, yes, okay. And it does look like it's a low, a, a lower level lift, so.
The next one comes from El Paso County, it's a rollback of immigration policies.
No.
No, what do you have?
I've, no.
That is.
Oh, okay, understood, uh, I suggested that we would oppose, this was to override the state law. Um, that basically gives Colorado in- independence from their ability for local law enforcement agencies. To have to follow all federal policies as it relates to immigration enforcement.
I oppose this.
Agreed, like Colorado to keep its independence.
Very good, next one is massage facility background, or background check cleanup, um. And.
This is, this is one I remember talking with Tom about last year a little bit. Where we would need to ensure background checks for massage parlor facilities. Uh, I think we've been fortunate, we don't, we did not identify any of those facilities within unincorporated county. But I see Mara.
We still have to, uh, it keeps getting pushed out further and further, we have to eventually adopt a policy for the background checks. Um, but we don't have to adopt a licensing.
It's not massage parlors, it's massage therapists.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we do have bunches of massage therapists in unincorporated county, so, um, but at this.
Sorry, Jared, you're right, we don't have those here in San Miguel.
But I think this was a more that where, uh, basically people that may be human traffic.
Yeah.
Victims of human trafficking and forced to work in areas, particularly in cities, perhaps the Front Range. Um, to ensure that they are not basically there illegally or being forced to work. And that, that is definitely not our issue in San Miguel County.
And this, this suggestion from Laramie County was just to make it one, an optional process. Or to take another approach to, um. Have the state maybe do these certifications, so I think it's, they're trying to not saddle counties with this.
Exactly, a non-funded mandate.
Is that a supporter or neutral?
I'm neutral myself.
Neutral.
Sounds good, but.
Next time Commissioner, uh, Polison has to go next. Okay, very good, uh, moving on, next one up is criminal penalties for sexual exploitation of children. From Douglas County. And individual sentenced for sexually assaulting or exploiting children are not required to serve time in jail. And this would require them to do so.
I highly support this.
I do too.
Yep.
What?
Um, just as a little, uh, fuller commentary, the CCI for the meeting, um, when this was discussed a couple of months ago. They said that currently because of there not being jail time required, it's just probation, that Colorado is seen as an easy place for human trafficking. So, um, I dep- I'm with Galena.
I'm with you too.
Very good, thank you, next up is state funding availability for emergency management. And. It's, uh, statutory framework emphasizes foundational role with emergency, man, uh, sorry. This is in relation to FEMA reforms and reductions to funding, county governments are burning with the increased costs of supporting all aspects. And.
I don't know enough about where the money's gonna come from to do this, and we're in such a tight budget situation. It sounds like a yes, but where's it gonna come from?
Anne, the only answer I have is, uh, from the explanation of the document. The problem does not require new funding from the state, just reprioritization and redistribution of existing funding.
But that means somebody's not gonna, who's getting it now isn't gonna get it, like who, who's gonna lose if we gain? You know, right?
Yep.
Would this potentially be one we should?
Stay neutral on and then.
Stay neutral on and, yeah, good call, further info on it, because I also am inclined to support it. But the funding source is pretty. Pretty important. Pretty important.
Or who would pull it from, right? Who's loses if this, right, wins?
Very good. The next up is Prop one, two, three reform. This is the state housing um, venture. Um, AMI flexibility for affordable homeownership in rural and resort communities.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, great. Um, so that we're not tied to just the state's um, Denver based funding.
And, and a nuance here was that the county proposing it said that there was so little flexibility that someone didn't like overqualified by two hundred dollars. A year or a month, they had to turn them away. So they, yeah, it's a good one, I think.
And we heard this when Commissioner Waring and I were with our Choletta County, that they just finished affordable housing development. Um, but they weren't able to uh, have the folks that were gonna be qualified purchase those homes or rent those homes. Because in the duration between when they built them and when people occupied, many people got cost of living increases that put them just slightly over the threshold.
That's it. And this is our Choletta County. Yeah, good. Yeah, okay, nice.
Okay. Next up is another Prop one, two, three, uh, Prop one, two, three corrections. This is the unit credits. So we're required to count uh, how many or add a certain number of units within. The three years since when we opted into the program. And originally it was thought that we were gonna be able to count them with towns. And then they went, came back and said, no, you each have to have your own separate counts. And so that has basically increased the amount of homes we would have to deliver at a time when. It would financially break most cities and counties if they had to deliver on that total number of units.
And I think that one of the points here that Jefferson County is making is that there's no required cooperation of municipalities. And so allowing counties to count anything that happens within their jurisdictional boundaries, including what's in the municipalities. That at least allows kind of an out for counties that have uncooperative municipalities as well. We've, we've been fortunate as a county that we do have good relationships. We're having a meeting tomorrow to talk about these kind of things. So I, I'm hopeful these are unnecessary, but these are things that could help us.
Sounds like you're needing to yes.
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 Very good.
Support.
Next up is under taxation and finance, and this is granting excise tax authority with voter approval to counties. Similar to what uh, cities have. I did see that CCI thinks it is not likely um. Passed.
I mean, I think. I'm getting a sense from Mike now to whatever months, years, two years, whatever months. That many counties in the state are really struggling with their um, revenues. And this would provide flexibility or an other option if the voters approve it. I don't know. It's something we would entertain right away, but. I feel like we need some fixes here and this could be one of them.
There were, there's been a lot of discussion in the renewable realm with potential utilization of excise tax. And I could see this coming into play there. So that would be a reason I would support it, even if it isn't necessarily applicable to San Diego County.
At this time, yeah. Well, we could make it. I mean, you can choose, like you said, solar, you can choose other sort of services to. You could, I think, use this for a ski resort tax or something, which looks like we're gonna probably have anyway. But yeah, I. I, even though I think it's a heavy lift, it feels like something that CCI needs to start working on. Staff, do you have a feeling or Lance?
I think it's a long shot, but worth a try. So yes.
The next one up, uh, from Dolores County is taxation reform, remove the status quo classification for energy facilities. And please correct me if I get this wrong, but essentially um, when they build uh, renewable energy facilities on property. It is not taxed. They wanted to be able to ta, look at the new use, commit, consider it, for instance, a commercial use. If that power is being sold uh, and tax it as a commercial use rather than maybe the agricultural land that it is on. Which has a substantially lower tax.
You nailed it. That's what this is about. And yeah, there's concerns in Dolores County right now with a large scale uh, utility scale solar array. That is classified as agricultural and so the county isn't benefiting at all. Um, I mean, very minimally benefiting. So.
And the um, the issue with this one, I think, is that the governor doesn't support it. Because he wants to do anything he can to promote renewable energies. And so if you are turning ag land, taxing ag land as commercial. That is a disincentive to using ag land for uh, solar. So this, the um, the CCI people here say that they feel like it's on a standalone basis. It's not a great idea. But maybe it's part of a larger package, so.
I know Cole has a comment he'd like to make. I can appreciate why Dolores County would want to do this, especially given that they're seeing uh, in a revenue shortfall. I do worry though that this is going to increase the price of creating medium scale or large scale solar to the point that we won't see any more of it happen. And that we're gonna then go have to go back to the coal and other um, fossil fuel base sources.
Yes.
I don't understand where Dolores County has the problem that uh, so say like agriculture. So we're purely, because of agriculture, I'm Tyler myself. But our house is taxed as residential. And you know, in other. It seems to me you put up a solar development, they ought to be able to go ahead and tax that solar development for its commercial solar.
That's what they want to do.
And, and then the, the land, yes, the land can still be agriculture, you know, until not charging for, on the acreage.
Right.
But charging on the facility itself. I, I fail to see why they can't do that, that we already do it for residences and things like.
I mean, they carve out the part that is your home and leave, that's residential and leave the rest ag.
Well.
But what I, what I just heard you say is more of a personal profit taxation of the physical infrastructure of the solar. While the underlying ground that's, was previously agricultural is still taxed as ag. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Oh, okay. I, I know in our place, we still pay exactly two hundred eighty acres, like everything's agriculture.
Right.
But we're still paying out on our house at Palm Reg, their residence.
As I understand what Dolores is trying to say is if you use two hundred of that two eighty eight to put solar panels on. Even if you did the agrivolt takes where you have it tall enough that you could graze, they want that two hundred acres to be taxed as commercial.
And I, I personally, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I think that's, but otherwise you're gonna get too.
Well, there was discussion about two things. One, that um, agricultural tax. But if it still is productive land, that maybe you don't make that change. And the other part that I've, I've heard discussed is that we don't want to discourage smaller like community arrays. And so that there should be some kind of size limit on it, right? Or minimum or maximum size that would this apply to.
So, but this is the location of a small or low impact hydroelectric energy, geothermal, biomass, wind or solar. On real property shall not affect the classification of that real property. It's for utility scale.
Okay, good. Yeah. Good, good, good.
Um, but to Mike's point, you know, it would, it could.
Know that incentives are going away now too.
Right.
So it's gonna make it less likely that we're gonna see this.
I, I think that we all see the potential ups and downsides of this. It would be uh, upside for small counties, especially rural counties. And it would be perhaps a downside for the general renewable energy industry and the environment. I think that we're sympathetic to both and I recommend that we stay neutral, knowing that the proposal is gonna come up in the twenty twenty-six legislative session. As part of um, the governor, I'm quoting, looking to cement his legacy on environmental issues. And this could be a point of leverage in conversations around state right citing in the twenty forty renewable goals. It sounds like it's gonna come up anyways and we don't have to take a CCI uh, firm position.
Thank you, Lance. I support that. All right.
Next up is a sustainable aviation fuel tax credit. Before by Peking County, they would like the state to provide a dollar fifty cent per gallon. Um, state subsidy or state tax credit for airports such as theirs that offer this uh. Sustainable aviation fuel. And I do see that the state goes great, but where are we gonna get the money to give them back these tax credits? You know, it's, do you, do you incentivize folks using a more um, sustainable or, or non um, fossil. Fuel base fuel source for aviation? Or do you ask the, and do you ask the state to pay for it if you do? And then we already know our state's in a budget crunch.
It's a good idea at the wrong time.
Yeah, I also think that they'd mention here that the statute would be in effect for eleven years from twenty-seven to thirty-eight. And that our state is hesitant to make those sort of long-term commitments. I also feel like I heard that sustainable aviation fuel, maybe someone knows more than this, me, I about this, that it costs quite a bit more than conventional fuel. So a dollar fifty a gallon might not actually help that much. I don't know. Is, did I get that wrong? Does anybody know?
I don't know what the price difference is. I'll look it up though.
That's all right. I, I think Lance, did I he, hear you're leaning no on this?
Yeah, I feel like if you are, this might be a place where government ends up having to use a stick instead of a carrot. So I'm, I'm no and I'll leave it at that.
Galena?
I hear that and agree. Okay, I'll go with that as well.
The next up. Is real estate transfer fee, uh, allowing counties to implement a real estate transfer fee to offset community impacts. By increasingly affordable real estate. So towns, some, certain towns uh, have this ability already. Um, the counties do not. The exception of the picking. Which are um, no counties that.
There were a few that were grandfathered in before Tabor, it's like seven or something.
And I believe all of those would be municipalities and that's what the real, real estate transfer tax. Not a real estate transfer fee. And I think their home rule charters have allowed them to assess a real estate transfer fee. Similar to this. And so this is a plea from particularly Pittkin County saying. We would like the same ability as.
Aspen.
The Aspens, Basalts, Cardenbales that are in our midst. To do the same thing. And I know that we do have a couple of municipalities on our county that have real estate transfer fees.
And they provided a lot of money.
Yes.
I, I sympathize with Peking County. I, I feel like it's bizarre that we can't um. We don't have this right if it were voter approved as others do. I also, where, I'm not sure where I picked this up, but this is a Colorado um, ski town cast priority. Is that in here? Um, I maybe picked it up in my notes, so. I would be in favor of this as much as I don't love taxes.
What's a fee?
It's a fee. Well, that's the other tricky.
Have to identify rational nexus for charging set fee.
I don't think that would be hard. Um, I, I do think though that, I mean, they, there is concern that this would be litigated. By the ProTabor people.
When you think about the, the homes that we see outside the boundary limit around Telluride or Mountain Village. Whether you're talking Raspberry Patch or the east end of near Idarado. You're seeing some of the, even because the towns prohibit those housing sizes. You might have a, a six thousand square foot home, uh, a possible in Telluride, but then they cross over the border and they can have a twelve thousand square foot home. And we see that many of them are doing that.
And would this kind of fee be scaled by size of the sale?
Thirty percent of the sale.
Right, right percentage or?
Yeah, that's how they are now.
That's, that's how it had been established is it is a one percent, two percent in, is the most common applications to date.
Think about this too. Lawson has a real estate transfer fee. So Lawson by itself has that, but.
Raspberry Patch doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the sorrow does.
Not. No, except for, no, just the de-destruction ones that funds SMRAHA. I forgot, or I just remember remembering that when Pittkin discussed this at the CCAP meeting. They said that a county could structure it any way they wanted. So if you wanted to, um, what do you call it? Uh, exclude the first five hundred thousand dollars in value. Great. That was gonna be my next question.
I would be a proponent for is, is kind of like having a, a, a baseline fee um, implementation. And you know.
And they suggest um, that. One of the very similar fees that we do have is our employee housing mitigation.
Yeah.
Right. And so if we, you can structure it in different ways as we have with that people. We exempt um, properties smaller than two thousand square feet, so on and so forth. So those can be established based again on those, on the nexus of. We are mitigating these impacts and those are generated by these homes and these nets.
I think pretty much is supported.
I, I think for me it's a support and then it would be quite a bit of work to figure out what, how to right-size it for us. But it would give us a door to.
Yeah, I agree. And, and you know what? I'm, I didn't read every word of this again today. So during the conversation, maybe you could, whoever, whichever of you is in there, make sure that the county can craft it the way they want. That, that, that's still allowed. Lance, hi.
Hi, I hear what you're saying, Anne. I agree. And I agree with the idea of at least giving us the option to consider this tool. So yes, support.
Great.
Excellent. Don't worry, we're a little more than halfway. Amending Board of Adjustment requirements for counties.
The, the conversation around this one was that it can be hard to find five people to sit on the Board of Adjustment.
But man, I asked, I asked Matt about this um, yesterday and he said. Then get rid of those board members who don't show and get another person to show up. Uh, he says he's never had a problem with this.
But the, the other counties were saying they just can't field five people who even want to be on the board, whether or not they show up or not.
We, we pay ours, so that helps them to show up. But um, but I can say for my last county, I couldn't get anybody because we didn't pay and it was a nightmare.
I, I was simply astonished that Laramie County could not.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of people.
There's no prohibition on paying your members to show up. So I think, you know, if you give somebody a hundred bucks.
I agree, yeah. I agree with that.
Agree.
Can't get a volunteer. Give him a hundred bucks.
And a good lunch.
Next one is concerning providing funding to local governments to sort, support construction and maintenance of county roads. That provide access to state-owned parks and in connection herewith utilizing overage of the new. Keep Colorado Wild Pass as the appropriation. So using the funds that are being collected from the state for those. Uh, passes that you can get with your license renewal can be able to help. And so I think for us, I think of Woods Lake um, as a state, um, state parks and. Um, the road that we have, the access is that um, it should be great if we had more money to maintain it.
I didn't know Woods Lake is a state park.
And Noble, right.
Near Monty, but.
Right.
Up major roads and. That, yeah, there's a couple throughout the county that this would be beneficial for us.
I'm willing to support.
Sounds good. Oh, yeah.
Next one, human services under SNAP benefits. Is that what y'all have?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, takeout sugary drinks eligible for um, SNAP benefits?
And candy.
Candy.
My understanding is already you can't use it, SNAP benefits for alcohol or cigarettes. And so they're trying to add now sugar sweetened beverages and candy to that. See.
I'm good with that. I know that it seems maybe like Big Brother, but I also know that anytime that. Someone's got diabetes and needs help and treatment and isn't able to um, fund that, that, that's a burden. That somehow our society has to try to help. Burden that somehow our society has to try to help out with. And I would love to not have people be able to make that choice with their SNAP benefits.
I'd support that and just a little anecdote. Working with the Norwood Food Pantry and working to offer healthier. Options to clients there and just education, there's been really positive movement there and so I think.
Can help, it can help, yeah, yeah. Okay, let's go, yes, thank you Lance and Galena.
Just realized that I'm gonna have to start joining you with your code.
I was thinking about it as I was drinking this. Never drink this stuff.
That doesn't have sugar, so you're good.
You just have to pay for your own money.
Well, technically, this one has zero sugar.
What's in here? All right.
Take coffee off the list, I'll be really good.
The next one is revising the Child Welfare Prevention and Intervention Services Cash Fund from Laramore County. And. Funding shortfall, funding allocation. Right now, all unspent general fund, general child welfare fund dollars included in the initial allocation to each county are transferred to the. Um the cash fund. We propose that the unspent general fund money, if it exists in future years, should be redirected back to the Department, Colorado Department of Human Services and all. Prevention for E funding should remain within the the. Department of Human Services to fund in-home services that prevent out of home placements. These monies would be redistributed to counties to help them provide essential services to that prevent out of home placements. As to be determined by the Child Welfare Welfare Allocation Committee or CWA.
So this is keeping quote unquote excess money in the program, is that right?
It's transferring it instead of.
Part of Human Services could no longer retain unspent apt allocation money in years where their funds are remaining, any unspent money. Is transferred to the fund.
The staff feedback adds that the challenge is that this money is currently devoted to the State Department of Early Childhood. For broader purposes associated with the prevention of child abuse. So it gets back to robbing Peter to pay Paul.
I wonder if we should ask um Linnea what she thinks about this one.
Right.
Okay. Can someone send her a note? Jared sent her a note, perfect, and maybe the commissioners, can you do that? So then we all know how where she came out. Oh, thanks, 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 okay.
Drop those results.
Thank you.
We we have a spreadsheet on this.
Okay, so that's that's revising child welfare program, okay, so we're gonna ask Linnea, okay. She always has a really good clear thinking on these.
So uh the next one is revisions to the legislative note fiscal note process and five year look back. And.
I read this one this morning and it looks like. Certain bills related to human services are not required to have a particularly. Well, I won't say rigorous, but the same level of fiscal scrutiny as other bill types. That's how I read it, and so it made sense to me, um but again, this might be another ask Linnea since this is her. Her area of expertise. What do you think?
I think that's a good idea, let's ask Linnea for her opinion and ask if she could get it to both me and Galena by Friday morning latest.
Great.
Next up, addressing county flexibility and funding from Jefferson County. This is a temporary waiver for SNAP and Medicaid. Statutory whatever, can't read one of my notes. Oh, for the SNAP and Medicaid statutory limit.
It's allowing the county to spend more than twenty percent of actual cost, like to chip in more if they want to. And Andy, the commissioner is recommending this because they anticipate cuts in this. And these funding from the feds and they want the ability to make it up.
I support this.
I read that.
I I, yeah.
Yeah.
I read this one and you like this, support it, yeah.
Listen it in my list.
Especially in some of these bigger like urban counties um. With high populations and there's just, they're anticipating major funding shortfalls for their populations.
So if they have the funds, they should be able to spend that, okay, I would say yes on that one too.
The only staff feedback red flag that I'm seeing is that it could unintentionally signal that counties across the board have funds available to spend more in SNAP. At current levels, which is not the case, but I'm willing to take that risk. So, yes, agree.
The good point Lance, though, it's a good point. So we have to, if we're gonna spend more than twenty percent, we have to do it kicking and screaming really loud. Which we would be.
Yeah, especially in these tight budgetary times, yeah, but I think that the sentiment is shared. Across counties that seeing these funding cuts is gonna be. Really problematic.
Agreed.
This next one is under land uses and natural resources, and this is one that we got a um. An email about several months ago and it's County Enforcement Authority of Ordinances zoning pests, building pest and weed control. And this would um obviously we can pass our own ordinances to restrict these things or penalize folks. But this would um. Make it. Provide state law that would basically reinforce and support.
Um while. Can I speak to this one a little bit? So this um because I'm on a separate um county attorney listserv about code enforcement. And this is an effort by several county attorneys, not to create any new enforcement authority for counties. But to really clean up the existing statutes to make them. Like coherent and co like to go together cleanly, because right now there's some inconsistencies in the different enforcement mechanisms. That makes it almost impossible to comply with both while pursuing enforcement. And it just has made the process for. Seeking enforcement from the courts really cumbersome for counties, um so this is just to try and clean up. Those provisions to make it so there's one clear process that applies. And to give some, I think, higher penalties to make that enforcement kind of worth. The squeeze, um because it is a lot of effort to go to for to seek enforcement, but when there's a hundred dollar. Um a day penalty, that's often not very compelling for people to to comply.
Sounds like a yes.
Thanks for that.
I would encourage you to support, we don't do a lot of enforcement, but if we did wanna pursue it, um it would be great to have a clearer path for doing that.
I'm with you, Maura.
All right, bigger shit.
The next one is a twenty twenty six amendment for Colorado wildfire resiliency code. From Delta County.
This is a, yeah, delaying enforcement from July first.
Yeah, this this is apropos to what Matt was discussing earlier about. Integrating this into our code, so it is a request to phase the implementation of it. To reexamine the maps that have been prepared. Um because Delta County for their part and a few other counties said it it is not granular enough in detail. Um and and a few other issues with the maps and then also they're seeking additional funding. To help implement this and so I I think that leads to some of the. I guess pessimism about its ability to pass in in two respects, one. We know wildfire is a present and continuing concern of the whole state of Colorado. Our county in particular, and uh another thing is the state doesn't have a lot of money to throw at these kind of programs either, so. Those are the kind of hesitant, I I would say. Um you know, we've we've kind of made a plan to try and implement it anyway, so it really would not um. It's not something we really advocate for, but I don't think we would say no if they were more submissive, so.
Neutral.
That sounds good.
Yes.
Uh the. The words that come out, is that part of the recording? I mean, is this made up for it? I just wanted to point out that when you said uh 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 a clearer.
Clear stick.
Yeah, it it didn't come out as stick, came out as S H I T.
I've noticed that too, sometimes it transcribes things that I've been appalled at some of the. Hopefully, these aren't our official meeting minutes, those are different, but.
We've seen other four letter words show up that were not expressed in the meeting.
We try not to.
That's funny, maybe.
Um next up is amending utility condemnation authority.
This one says that you have to um notify the county. Um or whoever the land authority is before you start condemnation processes.
And and I think that it goes, it actually tries to go a little further than that and demonstrate local approval.
Oh, yeah.
Of those condemnation efforts, um and I think in this particular scenario. Their concern with large transmission line easements and other things like that that are going across multiple counties. And um the county in question was concerned that they didn't get a very clear heads up. That um a large utility was condemning a pack for utility farm, something to that respect.
It's interesting, the staff feedback, this is generated from a very specific incident with one utility provider. Who, while unpopular, has a very robust, strong presence at the Capitol, so I think we can narrow it down to a few guesses. But.
Well, excuse me, when that happens, does a county have any input to what say the pipeline company must pay and they can do?
No, not counting as an procedural process. Yeah, but then also that's what John Swartos has thought is condemnation um. Designating values when there's a discrepancy in value, there's a separate independent board that the state hires. To basically arbitrate what the value should be for that condemnation.
I like this idea, I bet I I feel like it um you know, provides for more local control and. But I don't, it also says that the it will be hard to pass, so, right.
It just pointed interest, so when the pipeline went through Sliprock, nineteen seventy two, around back in Dariq Canyon. Uh they paid the private land over a dollar fifty per video rod of pipeline, okay? Which is sixteen and a half feet, right, and not very much per acre at all, basically wiping out huge amounts of land forever, okay? Then forever and ever, what was approved, for only fifty cents more, they can add another pipeline at any time in the future. Wow. Basically, they have a total freebie and and it's a it's. I and I'm going, how did this ever get through, you know, any anybody looking at that? A hundred, three hundred acres now, you can still be paying fifty cents?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh that's just fifty cents wasn't even money then.
Right.
Wasn't even money in nineteen uh uh seventy two, certainly not money today, yeah.
Are we a yes on this?
We're a yes, I'm a yes on this.
Okay, thanks for that context, cool.
Next stuff is eliminating the thirty five acre subdivision loophole from Flora Fino County. And they're seeing a lot of their adland um turned into vacant land for. Uh prospective residential development, but they're developing, they're basically using county roads and services. Without um creating the tax base to support that.
What I wonder what they mean by thirty five acre subdivision loophole?
Because you don't have to go through a formal subdivision process if you're sub.
Oh, if it's thirty five.
As as Kay mentioned earlier, again, another apropos comment was. If you have thirty five acres.
Yeah.
Um you don't have to do anything to subdivide.
Yeah.
That or to go down to a thirty five acre parcel, we have a couple subdivisions, one I know of very. Particularly because I wrote a letter this week, um or helped to write a letter this week. Um where they build a subdivision with thirty five acre parcels and then they want more. Better services and you know, it wasn't permitted that way, it wasn't made to come up to a subdivision standard, it was not.
They didn't have to build the roads to county.
Right, they they didn't have to sign over the actual rights of way or anything like that to the county to maintain these things, so. It's one of those things where. I would say, great, this sounds great as a. We'll keep planning staff super busy because we're gonna kind of make a new class of subdivision essentially. But I would say. I've been doing county work for over twenty years now and the bedrock of our. Land use has always been the thirty five or less subdivision, and so. You know, would be a pretty fundamental shift in the way we do land use in Colorado.
That doesn't mean it's a bad idea, right, Jared?
It just means that we would have more review and um you know, maybe be able to get ahead of some of these issues for. These large scale subdivisions that coming under this law.
There's so much, so much support.
Did you say support, Lance?
Did.
I would say support just because you don't have to treat every every thirty five or greater the exact same way. It's not as though you're saying everyone has to go through all of these processes.
Yeah.
You could define a number, a density, a location, the level of impact. You know, and those that are gonna require intense county services because they build it up. An extremely steep road that accesses other stuff, you could treat differently than flat outlined land.
Right, and also just valuing view sheds and agricultural lands. I I've see this coming into play there, so.
So should we be a yes and see how the conversation goes?
Yep.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Next up is the Air Quality Control Commission Regulation Thirty One Opposition. This is from Morgan County and this is um. The essentially pushback on the additional um methane and greenhouse gas. Emission regulation controls for landfills.
We've had um some back and forth on this because Senator Simpson asked us for our view. And we shared or we determined that we were opposed to this, so that would be in support of this opposition.
Right.
Unless anyone's opinion has changed since.
No change.
Just for the public if they're curious, we were concerned about the financial impact on smaller landfills like Brokane and others. Such that they already have methane monitoring and capture requirements, this would make that threshold even much lower. Increasing their cost significantly, increasing the cost to dump materials there, which then could lead to folks just dumping out in the woods. It also could see smaller landfills closed, so we had also suggested to them. Where why don't you focus on landfills that serve communities of a significant size, like on the front page or major metro centers? And they could be held accountable to these stricter regulations where it's gonna do the most impact to reduce methane or other greenhouse gases.
So maybe we are a no if smaller counties or rural areas are excluded?
I think we just want to make sure that there's a, a small or rural exemption to this so that we don't see rural landfills, fills closed. Because if Broad Canyon closes, then we're hauling to Mullet and just the, every trash truck or whatever, and then how long before you're gonna see. Somewhere to Burn Canyon where people are dumping stuff off the edge.
I can send you all the note that I wrote to um Senator Simpson, if you want any. Basically summarizes quickly what we said.
That, will you please send that?
Yeah, I'll send that to both of you, depending on who is in that meeting, part of the meeting.
Look at our stalwart stuck with us.
Thank you. This is very interesting.
Yeah, good.
I'm sure of things that we, I never hear about.
Yeah, state laws.
Darlene, maybe you should run for county commissioner.
State breath.
Yes.
You got my vote, come on, it's only two year commitment. Okay, uh, the last one is under agricultural wildlife and rural affairs. Eagle County preventing illegal wildlife harvesting. And I need to look at, I know what was on that.
I didn't highlight anything.
This was, go ahead, Jerry.
They, they largely are concerned that folks, the, the penalties for pretty much. Poaching on public lands or like county open space, those kind of things um are so low. That people simply pay the fine and uh kind of take animals, keep the animals, pay their thousand dollar fine and. Enjoy their trophy home and, and um, so I, I think what Eagle County is suggesting here is to. Increase those penalties and make um. Just increase the barriers to um. Allowing or, or those kind of transgressions on particularly their county land, but other places in the state as well.
I, I must say, I was one of the guys that I heard that, that uh, I always thought, hey, division of arts and wildlife has. Total control over the same charge happens everywhere in the state. If, if an animal was poached, was private land, forest service land, wherever, and gosh, I couldn't believe it. Totally changes according to where. Over now.
Right.
Yeah.
And these are talking about, about the fact that a lot of in these richer areas around, you know, Aspen or Eagle.
Yeah.
They're seeing people that are paying, you know, huge sums of money, thirty thousand for their hunting trip for guides and stuff and they're like, well, what's a thousand dollar fine? If I get to shoot that trophy ball?
Support this one.
Yeah Lance, are we doing on time?
You are half hour ahead of, or you're right on schedule.
Okay, we're right on schedule. All right, thank you Mike and Jared and everybody for your leadership and yeah, um. Again, just to remind Lance and Galena, if there's conversation and you end up with different information and you feel like you're persuaded, then you have the. Authority of the B O C C to, to um vote as you see fit.
Not a major yet, but it's, everybody heard the stream access coalition.
Extreme access?
Streams access coalition.
No.
So there's a group that's pushing to come out with legislation, I don't know, legislature this year, that would basically. Uh. Allow any member of the public to walk across any private land anywhere, if there's any type of stream, no matter how small it is.
Hmm.
You know, people just kind of.
As long as they stay in the stream.
In the stream or right beside the places that's affected by the stream. And then they, they have all these sharp videos out there that just make it like, they're just trying to get people to float rivers. People can already float the rivers.
Correct.
But, but they're actually going after. You, you read the details, it gets down to like, there's no limit in how small the stream can be, okay? And I just gave them what I would say, well, then you ought to take away, you ought to give people private landowners protection from any lawsuits.
Right.
And they're saying, oh, private landowners stole the suit. And, and then they came back and said, well, you're going to be really better off to really know that you have no protection. Yeah.
Yeah.
The people are crazed.
You know what, we will watch out for that, if that comes up to either C C I or C C A, we will keep our, our ear to the ground for that, thank you for bringing it up.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
It would be a real, the way that they can talk about it, it would be pretty much a disaster for anybody throwing in a land.
In terms of just basically trespassing allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Loss of privacy, but also of, you know, they're, so they're, they're coming, why are you paying a thousand dollars a year? For liability insurance in case of a river runner gets hurt? Well, because we don't want to have our land taken away from.
Yeah.
Runner gets hurt.
Right.
Why you pay a thousand dollars a year liability insurance? And they're saying, you don't have to bother liability insurance, and then they go home and say, by the way, uh, you. Anybody under eighteen years old can call out, they're introducing a property, you are automatically responsible for them.
Okay, we gotta keep moving, but thank you for bringing that to our attention, very much appreciate, I made a note and we'll listen um in case those come up. Um, let us carry on to commissioner updates. Uh, Lance, you've been sick, you probably don't have too much to say.
Let me grab my notes, I might.
Okay, um, Galena, you ready to go or?
Sure, yeah.
All right, go for it, um.
Just an update on the Four Seasons workforce. Um. What we're talking about, housing. There's a meet, meeting scheduled for October sixth. This next Monday in Naterita with Mayor Mack Ventures, Town and Mountain Village and. What is now called the West End Community Benefit Coalition, um, who is consisting of Naterita Mayor. Gene Greenwood, Nu- Nukla Mayor Paula Brown, Norwood Mayor Candy Meehan. Montrose County Commissioner Sean Pond, um, Norwood Fire Chief John Bachrass. Mustang Water Authority Representative Tim Pierce. Um, Michaela Gordon of West End Economic Development Corporation and myself, um, we will be meeting with. The Four Seasons representatives, um, talking about the concept of a community benefit agreement. And getting updates on what their workforce plans are. Um, now that that property in the mountain village has officially closed and they have secured their financing. Um, and then next steps will be to hold community meetings to. Provide outreach to the community and give people an opportunity to give feedback to representatives.
Will mountain village representatives be at that meeting as well?
Yes, they will, yeah, Mayor Mack Ventures and, and representatives from the Town and Mountain Village.
Galena, I know you've been working really hard on that, thank you for your leadership and your column in the Basin Forum.
Yeah, thanks.
Really helpful, really.
Um, yeah, I think that there's been. There needs to be public outreach, but we just haven't been given very much information to date and so it's been hard to engage. With the public without really much hardened, uh, like hard tack information as to what this is going to look like and how it might impact communities. So this meeting will be very helpful to just get up to speed with what their plans are and take some next steps. Um, I marched in the Pioneer Days Parade in Norwood last weekend uh with the Norwood School Bond Committee. And I also spoke on Coto off the record last night on behalf of the Norwood School Bond Committee. Um. And something that just transpired today in discussing this with. Um, with Ryan Rigetti of Road and Bridge is. Uh, Katie Alexander from Norwood brought forth this concept of having a um. Contest among all of the elementary s- school classes in the county to name the uh county snowplows. And then Katie Alexander will provide decals for the snowplows with the winning names. Um, to name all the snowplows, so Ryan was really in support of the idea, um. And he thought they could bring a snowplow to each of the schools, so. The Norwood School, uh, Telluride Elementary and the Telluride Mountain School. Um, so just wanted to share that with you all and make sure you're in support of the idea, but. Be fun to also hopefully garner some interest from the next generation to maybe work for Road and Bridge someday. Um, and just kind of a fun little thing, um. And then also wanted to bring this to your attention, Katie Alexander approached. Me asking if the county would be potentially interested in contributing um to Noel Night in Norwood. Uh, that she does like stockings for all of the kids and I thought I would just put this on. Your peripheries to think about maybe giving some contribution to Norwood Noel Night.
Done that. Yep, yeah, but I think one thing we did I really liked was we bought um. Like those L E, not L E D, but those ne- those light up necklace glow, uh glow stick necklaces to keep the kids safe during that night. But I, I, we did do that out of the B O C C.
Yeah.
So, you know, small slush fund in the past, so I would say yes, Lance, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, it's like a hundred bucks or a hundred fifty bucks.
Uh, well, I'll think of something that would be. Beneficial and, and promote safety.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No sugary drinks or candy.
No sugary, none of, none of this. All right, and then this has been agendized, but um, I want to bring up the. An update to the Norwood Food Pantry Housing and um. There is a potential option brought to my attention last week in the Samuel County Fairgrounds. Um, I, and this would be in the arena where the kitchen is. Um, so I went and toured the space with uh seven, Stephanie. Grebe from Fresh Foundation as well as Leela Seraphin and Fresh Foundation's go-to. Uh Carpenter to just check out the viability of the space. Um, what we discovered there is that it would be a very viable space with some. Uh, minor additions being a temporary wall and drop ceiling. Um, adjacent to the kitchen in the breezeway on the east, east side of the building. Um, just to give you a little background, the kitchen is just used once a year during fair um. From, for basically an eight day period, Sunday to Sunday in mid-July, so it's virtually in. It's a very underutilized space, um, so that's why, you know, I thought this could be a good option. Um, for the Norwood Food Pantry because as we all know, they're. They're really scrambling to find a home at this point and there really have been no. Solid viable options that are coming to fruition right now, um, and it's getting to be. Uh, pretty late in the game to make a decision, um. There would, there would be some hurdles in that the food pantry would need to not. Operate during that week of fair, so they would have to figure out an alternative location for distribution during that week. Um, and then there would need to be. Uh, distribution happens on Fridays as well as deliveries, so. The arena would potentially have to be closed on Fridays, it's currently open seven days a week, um, so there would be. Limited service for the public there one day a week.
And that's for people riding horses inside?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and the reason being, I mean, there could be maybe some middle ground reached, uh, there would not. The public would not be able to be there during delivery because big trucks pull up and.
Yeah.
I don't know if I need to get too far in the weeds, but in the winter, there's um, snow shed that goes. Off the east side of the building, so the access would have to be on the north side of the building specifically during the winter months. Um, and that would, having crossover with the public during delivery would be a no-go. One of the reasons that this, the. Service at the school has been problematic is crossover with the public and some of the clients has been. Problematic and I see that as potentially being an issue at the arena, so that's why I would potentially suggest just. Utilizing the building for the food pantry services on Friday and not having the arena open just one day a week. Um, but then there would be no staff or volunteer crossover any other days of the week, they could just do their services. And, and um, distribution on Fridays and that would be it, um. You know, if you want to entertain this, uh, I would suggest a year lease with option to renew. If the arrangement is working for all parties, um, what their Carpenter Matt was looking at is it is. Would be constructing a temporary wall that could be taken down. Um, without a whole lot of headaches or funding or no real alterations to the building. Um, so I just wanted to bring this to the commissioners and see. What your thoughts are on it, um, you know, might necessitate getting another, your set of eyes on it. Um, Anne had mentioned that she might be able to stop by there this afternoon to just take a look. At what this would entail, um, and I'm happy to walk the building with you and show you what is envisioned, um. But the Fresh Foundation Board is in support of this concept, um, they think it's. By far the most viable option that they have on the table right now.
And Glenda, did you say we had already agendized this conversation?
Yes, it's on the agenda under Commissioner.
Oh, right, oh, okay, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, um, I thought I would just bring it up considering I have all the details on this.
Yeah, and as just one other point of context, we do provide um a space for the Telluride Food Pantry currently in the Fruen Building. At no cost, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in the past, we've talked about food being one of those really fundamental um. Social determinants of health that as commissioners, we feel fairly, you know, concerned about. Um, given, you know, the health, safety and welfare mission of our, of commissioners, so. I definitely think this is worth looking at and um, Jared and I were going to go by on our way. Um, back to Norwood or when we're in Norwood today, and are they expecting us there, the, he's calling it. Calling to see, um.
I, I can notify Charmin, I think she's there till five.
Okay, we should get there in time, and do we need Galena to come and show us around, because you haven't been to see where it would be, really?
I could just pop in there and show you.
I can too, because you showed me exactly where they would want to construct the wall.
All right, we could just, I just don't, yeah, let's plan whoever can to stop there for just a few minutes, Lance?
I've got just two questions, Galena, I'm in total support, I think that you've uh figured out a great solution. Um, one question is, you mentioned a year-long lease with an option to renew. And I was wondering, is that a lease for a dollar a year or did you have a lease amount in mind or?
I, I don't at this point, I thought we could kind of hash that out, um. But I think, I think there might be some concerns from the Fair Board and, you know, this will need to be. Discussed with, with Janet and I think setting kind of a, a year marker and with, with. The understanding that this will be revisited would, will be important to. Help all the parties involved understand that there's going to be a check-in. So that's kind of where I was coming out with this kind of year lease marker, as far as the amount of monetary exchange, if there's any. Or if it's just kind of a signed agreement, um. I, I don't know how we operate within the Fruen Building with the Telluride Food Bank, like what if, is there any monetary exchange there or?
There's a deposit.
A deposit, yeah. Right, I mean, I think a deposit makes sense, um, it's just so that there is so- some. You know, um, good faith agreement that if something gets broken, there's some money there to.
And when there was, uh, we had an incident where water had been left on and overflowed and caused. Damage to our unit downstairs, we did notify them that if anything like this happened again in the future that. They may have to pay a rent and since then it's been tight.
Yeah.
I had a couple more questions if um, you've got a minute, but that was a great answer, Galena, I totally agree about the. Year um, check-in and I also agree that we should not charge if we're not charging in the Telluride Food Bank. Um, I'm wondering if we have data available for how many horseback riders show up on. Days of the week, um, I think that I'm willing to inconvenience. Or reduce their access from seven to six days a week, but I'm curious if that's. You know, three hundred people or ten people or some number in between.
Yeah, I did inquire about that, um, I didn't get a solid number, but I do. I do understand that weekends are really important there um because they hold clinics and that usually happens on Saturday, Sundays. Um deliveries from the Food Bank of the Rockies happen on Fridays from nine to eleven. There's no flexibility there. So that has to happen during that day. Um as you all might recall, the Norwood Food Pantry has changed their distribution um time to Sunday afternoons to accommodate the school's request, but in a perfect world, that would happen on Fridays like it has in the past, so that volunteers and staff can just be there on that one day a week and not have to spread their schedule throughout in into other days of the week. Um as far as number of users, I I was told it's a, it's a handful of people, whatever that means. Um I I don't really know, but I I think that there are some real core users of the arena. Um probably a dozen plus folks and I know it is very important to them. Um and I am sensitive to their, you know, that that is a real community amenity. Um but I'm hoping that by utilizing the space for just one day a week, there's still ample opportunity for people to be able to ride there and attend clinics and use it as they.
Totally agree. Um my last question is maybe one that you had a chance to talk with Stephanie about, and that was the fact that we did do a sixteen thousand dollar emergency contribution at our last meeting. And if we are able to proceed with this plan, I'm wondering if that sixteen thousand dollars is necessary for remodel and and getting moved in, or if that sixteen or some portion of that sixteen could be refunded to the county.
Yeah, and I think that that's a discussion that needs to be had at further length with with Stephanie and and the entire board of Fresh Foundation. I I do know that the renovation will cost some money, but um there, Matt, the Carpenter, was gonna get back with a quote and I think there'd just be some crunching of of numbers uh with the organization's current funds and what 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 they need to get this done, but I I think by, I I can speak as a board member and my thoughts is that I, if there's funding that's needed from that sixteen thousand dollars, I think Stephanie should bring that to the Board of County Commissioners and then whatever remains should or if it's all of that sixteen thousand dollars can come back to the county, basically what I'm saying it um depending on what the quote comes in, on what building this temporary wall and drop ceiling and any additions to the electric there. Um she she can report back to us on what they might need and if they do need to dip into that sixteen thousand dollars to make this happen, or if they are able to just return those bonds.
As I recall, a big, a bit, big part of their projected budget was rent. Um and that was, I think we, they were projecting out maybe even a year. So if there are other funders available who could cover the renovation and we provided this space, that that would feel kind of appro, fair, but not saying I wouldn't contribute part of it. I just think we should we shouldn't be responsible for all of the rent and the renovations if there are other people that can, or other organizations that can support as well.
Yeah, that seems very reasonable to me. Um and I think that Stephanie is just waiting to hear the decision made here if if commissioners are all in support of this concept and then she'll go back to her drawing board and figure out what they need to make this happen.
You've got my support. Thank you very much for um working so hard and coming up with a wo, a solution. Well done.
Um thanks. I'm also not gonna take credit for this because Carmen was the person who brought this to my attention. Um and then I just moved forward with her idea. So props to Carmen.
I I have one question. I I I agree with Lance. I mean, this sounds like a terrific um solution and and a really good use of underutilized property. I wonder though if it would be appropriate for the commissioners to hear from um both staff who work over there as well as the Fair Board. Um and so I'm wondering if we should agendize a follow-up discussion um with the understanding that we are absolutely leaning towards it, but that I feel like we should hear from all interested parties. Does that seem fair?
I I think that is fair, absolutely. I think there may, a- as I understand it, there may be some resistance to this concept.
Yeah.
Um and I I think that it's would be prudent for this board to hear those, you know, their thoughts on it.
And I think Lance's question about how much the arena is used on Fridays would be helpful as well. Um we aren't meeting for another two weeks. I don't want to hold things up too much. How, what does everybody think about the that?
I also wonder when the Fair Board meets next and if it is not soon, if it, if this can wait that long, because I know that they were looking to move in the month of October.
The pantry, the food pantry is?
Even if we said yes today, the construction is not going to be complete and there will not be able to be moved in until the end of the month as it is right now. So I, I, you know.
What I had suggested is on the east end is to make a triangle shed room. Have that space come out with an outside door. So you're not interfering with anything in the fairgrounds that it's from the outside with a nice walkway that people just park at the fairgrounds parking lot. And deliveries can happen there too if we need to put in a sidewalk or something. Um because this problem isn't gonna go away. Um
Which problem?
Of finding a place.
Oh, yeah.
Food bank. And so unless we have some long-term solutions, it might be wise for, and then we're not interfering with anybody at the.
So under your idea um of the east entrance, if that could be kept viable, then the rentals in New Some Fridays could potentially still occur.
If it was.
Cause they're accessing from the north side and they would not be in this area, especially if we build the wall.
Yeah, I, and I think that that should be explored. I I did sit in there with Charlene, who's the facilities maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
Um person there and she, she's been working there a really long time and ha, she has some real concerns about the winter months and that east side of the building not being safe for entrance at all, even if there was a structure can built onto it because of the roof sheds, so so I think it might.
We did an extension now out from that area. We're just sort of this.
So let's, um, um, I wonder if, I don't know that we can do something in, right?
Yeah, I don't.
But I do think that, uh, I'm glad you brought that up because if we go look at it this afternoon, then we can look at those options. Lance, did you want to say something?
Uh, you said what I was gonna recommend. Let's look at it on the ground and you have uh Charlene there hopefully and you guys can talk it through. If Carmen can join, so much the better.
I wonder though if that is gonna be a little much for today. I mean, I can go by and ta, and you know, take a look at it, but I I feel a little uncomfortable making this re, uh, decision today without talking to our staff and without hearing from people who might have concerns. And so do you, I'm just trying to think, maybe we should allow those who are um you know, working on the project to come up with a a firm kind of sketch, if you will, and I don't mean necessarily drawn, but I, concept. And then we could have an another meeting. I thought the, that the food pantry was good at the school until through the end of the year, which I know they'd rather not.
Their leases, but they do not want to be moving in the middle of winter. They were hoping to be into a new location in October, which was yeah, the timing of the request.
I I just don't feel comfortable making the decision today. Um well, I mean, we could have maybe a special meeting if we just all zoomed in for an hour or something.
My concern isn't your availability, because you meet almost every week. It's the Fair Board's availability. Cause if they're a month out, you want to talk to them. And and so I guess, well, my Lance has a suggestion. I also have one.
Lance.
Go ahead.
Well, let's, let's hear your thought first, Mike, please.
Oh darn, yours was gonna be better. I was gonna say, great idea, Lance.
Mine's actually a question.
I have heard, not heard Carmen's suggestion. I do think if we're gonna create the east entrance and we could make it a place for deliveries as well as the public um could have year-round viable access. Um I would not put off because that, if we were gonna do that, we would need to be constructing ASAP to have this available for November or December.
So I will weigh in and say like from a knowing the limited funds of this organization and constructing what would need, from what I understood, what would need to be like engineered basically to make it a safe viable entrance and to have like a semi-truck delivery in winter. I I just, it seemed pretty untenable to create something like that on the east side. So on the north side of the building, it's it's ready-made.
Lance?
Yeah.
Let's try to thread the needle between being thoughtful and also expeditious. If we did the solution that you initially proposed, Galena, of the north side entrance, that for a year would let us kind of test the program. If it's working, we'll have plenty of time to perhaps design an east end entrance. And that would address the concerns, I think, about equestrian use on Fridays because it's only fifty-two Fridays of a year. And then we're gonna perhaps make the problem go away with uh another entrance. Regarding talking with the Fair Board, Anne, if I understood Galena correctly, operations would have to cease for the um fair to happen for that one week anyways. So I'm not sure what impact we'd be exerting by putting the food bank in to this space on the fair if we all agree that for one week, either everyone is going somewhere else. Um emergency tent location or is um doing another plan that we haven't come up with yet, but.
Don't know if that's their only concern.
Yeah, and I will say that they will be, they would be losing that space where the wall was constructed. It's a breezeway and they set up vendor, vendors and organizations set up tables during the fair week in that space. So it would be some lost space, not very much, mind you, but it would be some lost space for the fair. Um
So we'd be talking about that with the Fair Board and they're gonna probably be concerned, but the broader community benefit here is, I think, what you said, Anne, about um a fundamental, food is a fundamental need for our community. And vendor space is important, but possible to find elsewhere. So I'm willing to defer that conversation in the interest of keeping the food available to our, our needy residents. Um I think the same is true for the equestrian community. Um there may be a handful and may, and they may be a handful when we talk with them, but I think that they would understand that we are trying to provide a critical um need. And that we all have to give a little ground sometimes in order to keep our, our culture and the fabric of our community intact. So if that time is really of the essence, I'm, I'm willing to override Anne, your normal and wise instinct to talk with everybody in order to get this to proceed.
Galena, do you feel that it is, that time is that urgent? Like we couldn't wait two weeks to have the Fair Board comment and talk to our staff and?
I mean, what, what I would, if we could make a decision on our, over our, it sounds like we're all in support of this. Um and I think it might if we look at the Fair Board's schedule and if they are, happen to be meeting in the next two weeks, um and we were able to overlap and have this discussion with them, great. I think that Janet Cask repres, you know, she ultimately represents that board and could, we could speak with her, with her directly.
Yeah.
Um and she could bring it to the board. That would be another way to at least address this. Um but I, having seen the food pantry move less than a year ago and that the effort that that took, I am concerned that if we get an early winter, um and it's gonna be really challenging to do this rolling into November and December. Um and the, the big concern is that there will be a gap in service for the community and we don't want to see that.
Will it, the challenge physical because of ice and snow and moving heavy stuff or? What, what, what do you foresee if it is in early winter? What's the?
Yeah, it's moving big appliances in snow and ice, basically. And and food. Yeah. It's not untenable. Um you know, it's really a matter of two block, two and a half blocks. It's not very, it's very close where the food pantry is currently and where this space is. So that's, that's a real benefit.
Mm-hmm.
I think ultimately Anne is right that the food pantry can stay in its current location until the end of the year. And we have that. They, they have that time, um but the sooner the better for their operations and planning.
I think it would be fair to ask the Fair Board um to hold an emergency meeting or to poll their members or somehow provide us feedback without necessarily waiting to their next meeting. I mean, we are trying to be nimble here and um I just I just can't make, imagine making a decision without at least hearing directly from their chair or Janet or somebody. That said, I love this idea. I do, and I don't want to hold it up. So um I, I guess, are you looking for a decision today or do you feel that we could?
No, no, I, I just wanted to bring this up to you all. Um I mean, I think the Fresh Foundation would like a decision as possible, but we need to, you know, be methodical in our, in our process here. So I totally respect what you're saying.
We have a lot going on on the fifteenth, but um
So if they're supportive, you're saying, okay, we're gonna go forth, we'll make, do this construction. If they say, no, we don't support this, we think you should find them a spot somewhere else or rent them some other space. I guess what premiums are you allowing an advisory board to make decisions on county-owned property?
Yeah.
When seemingly you, they still have six days and this is for an optional activity. This is not for basic assistance.
I guess I'm just, um
Cause I think.
I would let them say no, but I would like to hear what their concerns are so that we can work that into our agreement with the, with the foundation. So how, why don't we say that? Why don't we say, Lance, how do you feel about this? The answer, we do feel and we want the food bank there, but we'd like to hear from staff and the Fair Board about what their concerns are and develop our agreement with the Fresh Foundation or the Food Pantry around those. Does that feel fair?
That feels fair to me. Yes. Um I mean, without having heard those concerns directly from the board, you know, I, I, I have heard the the concerns.
That they exist.
Re, reported that to you all today just based on the need for that space, specifically the kitchen during that week of fair. Um
But you've already worked around that or like that figure, we'll have to figure out a way to work around that.
Yeah, but as far as the usage, the weekly usage, I think that that feedback would be good to get because I, I was told that there's clinics held on the weekends and people come and go through the week, but to get that information directly from the Fair Board would be really useful.
Okay, so Lance, well, how do you feel about um saying, you know, agreeing today? Is this a regular meeting where we can make a decision?
It is.
Okay. Um uh that we, we'd like the food bank to be there, but that we would like to work with staff and the Fair Board to create or to develop an agreement with the food pantry that takes into account, we can't obviously necessarily agree to resolve all of their concerns, but take the, all of their concerns, but takes those into account.
I think that's a really good idea.
Okay, so let's have them come to us and I know this will be um feel quick, but on, at our next meeting and carve out, you know, forty minutes or something to hear from them. Does that make sense? And the Fresh Foundation?
Yeah.
And actually, Galena, if it's possible to get some of this groundwork done before the fifteenth?
Yeah, the schematic drawing.
Or, or even conversations. Or do we even need to come back to us, Lance, actually? If we just provide direction to staff to, to, to um If we just provide direction to staff to 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 um and and Galena to accommodate as best we can the concerns of our staff and the fair board, are we just, are you, is is our work done here?
I've been wanting to make this happen with the minimum amount of extra meetings. I think that we are going to encounter some resistance. I think that we'll do our best to listen and be receptive, but I don't think we're gonna ever overcome the folks that like to ride on Fridays or the folks that like to have the vendors in that certain spot. There's other concerns? Let's hear it and try to figure them out.
Yeah, why not? Well, I I think, Galena, that how do you feel about this? And I don't mean to put this on your shoulders. I'm assuming it'll go to the Fresh Foundation to meet, have these meetings and come up with this direction or this, you know, agreement, although we do need somebody from the county involved. Who would that be?
From what?
In terms of making an agreement with the food pantry and 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 hearing all of the concerns of the um of the fair board. I just don't want Galena to have to navigate and negotiate another agreement.
We would work out a license agreement for the space and incorporate any provisions that we need to accommodate.
And and I would say we've got standard license agreements for this. Just put conditions into those standard license agreements that try to address some of these issues and I I would maybe suggest if this is the focus of the board and the board is saying, yes, let's figure it out, that you just say, yes, let's figure it out and let us figure it out.
Okay.
That sounds great.
That sounds great. So you you you, whoever, one, you, three people here are nodding. You'll, uh, somebody will um reach out to the fair board or, yeah, and work with Fresh Foundation and the fair board to sort it out?
And I'm happy to be liaison specifically to the the Fresh Foundation um to make sure that all of this is being relayed.
Without Galena having to schedule meetings and draft agreements and take notes and all that kind of thing. That'd be great. Thanks. Okay, and just let us maybe report back on the fifteenth, how things are going, um, whoever.
Yes. Yeah, I made a note here, October fifteenth.
That's our next meeting too. Yeah, just like things are going fine.
Report back.
Yeah, we've, we're working our way through it or we have this big hurdle and if you need the other commissioners to participate, we can we can weigh in at that time.
Great. Okay.
Okay.
Um, I also just wanted to remind everybody I'm will be attending the um Mountain Town twenty thirty conference next week. Yes, um, I had a schedule conflict and I am not able to attend the Agro-Baltaics workshop.
Oh, too bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's a other one. It's good.
Yeah.
Okey-doke. Um, I went to a collaborative action for immigrants meeting last Wednesday and there was quite a lengthy discussion about the citizen-initiated ballot measure on the town of Tyrride, um, ballot number three hundred. Um, concerns were raised that if all of the that that the big decisions that are planned to be included under three hundred would be made by the voters, that there would be unrepresented um interests in that decision-making, um, that the town council is better able to consider regional interests as well as interests of people who aren't able to vote. And um anyway, that was the 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 co- the conversation and I thought it was an interesting perspective. There was conversation in the CCAT um realm about whether any of um our counties are going to be writing letters to the governor about unfunded mandates. We've heard or seen e-mails and letters going around from what I'll call more conservative counties um that are protesting unfunded mandates that might be different from the ones that matter to us. And um I haven't been on on that chat today, but um the question is, do do we want to write kind of a letter together as CCAT about the unfunded mandates that we do have concerns about? And um this is something I was just wondering how much staff feels or anybody, um commissioners, this is something that impacts us and whether we should be getting involved in this in this work. Have you felt like that's something that's clearly impacting the county?
Not normally.
Yeah.
Um, I think generally a lot of the unfunded mandates are for things that we're supporting.
Yeah.
So I don't. I
Don't have a strong feeling.
I I hesitate to say it's not of importance to us because there's always something that comes out of left field, but in general, I don't feel like it's had a huge negative impact for us.
I I agree. It's it's one of those things. I think our county has been shielded from some of these things just by our sheer size, the size of our programs. You know, it's something that we're we're picking up with a fraction of a staff member just picking up a couple extra things, some things that we're doing already. Whereas some of these larger counties in particular that have have these unfunded mandate and, you know, issues, um, they might need additional staff because they have a much larger presence or pressure.
Bigger scale. Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a scale issue for us as one of those frontier counties. So um you know, I I also agree that a lot of the programs that are being portrayed as unfunded mandates and all the emails we see um tend to be a lot of things that we support as a county for a lot of respects. So I I almost see our kind of neutral walk on these things as the right path for us because we know if the state decides to do something more drastic or has a certain program that um does have a significant impact us on us, then we'll say something about it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Um, I just also wanted to report back on some conversations I've been having about co-responder funding. We had talked in our retreat about the importance of that program for the county and we heard about it also from the Behavioral Health's um strategic plan. We also talked about it last time we were here in Egner about the need for a co-responder program. Um, and yet, um, the county's financial position is different than it was when we first agreed to fund the seed money. So um the first thing I did was reach out to the Behavioral Health Solutions Panel, John Pendolfo, among all of his many responsibilities is the chair of that. And let him know that or asked him if there might be an opportunity for um that to for the Behavioral Health Solutions Panel to fund part of it. Um, there is definitely, you know, he's like, we have our process, we have our grants, you're out of step. But he's gonna come to our October fifteenth meeting to discuss this. Um, and to give us some more background on how they make their grants and talk about whether there might be room for some co-responder funding. We also put out an ask to um the towns through their fire uh police chiefs um and the Marshals Department for some funding from each of the town jurisdictions since they would benefit from this as well. And also just an informal ask to the Tyrride Fire Department, having had a conversation about that. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm trying to cobble together funding from wherever that that might make sense for the first couple of years. Uh, well, I guess it would just be the first year, but with a a shift in understanding that it's not, the county isn't able to do it all ourselves this first year. Um, let's see. Oh, um, Galena and I went to the elected officials lunch on Monday and um we reviewed the ballots for November fourth for each of the various entities except for the Mountain Village. And I just wanted to point out that there are no other taxing entities that are going trying to lift the five point two five percent cap um other than ours. Um, and I'll just mention for members of the public who are hanging in there with us that we you will see two ballot measures proposed by the county commissioners. Um, currently, based on twenty twenty-four legislation, the county has a five point two five percent cap on how much revenue we can collect in twenty, increased revenue we can collect in twenty twenty-six. Even though our assessed valuation went up seventeen percent, we can't you know, capture that full amount. And so we have are asking the voters to approve lifting that cap just on three funds. One is the Early Childhood um Fund, which helps with su- um subsidized childcare in the county and payments to providers and and that whole system. The other one is our Mental Health um Fund. And the third one is the Road and Bridge Fund. So all that will you'll be getting more information about, including on your ballot, in the newspaper, that kind of thing. And I'm happy to talk about it with you as well, but we are the only um entity that is going for um an increase in or a lift, I should say, to maintain the current funding. Um, what else? That I want to talk about.
How will we be receiving uh information?
That information? Well, it's on the ballots. I'm not entirely sure how we share information, like we don't, we're not part of the blue book. Does anybody know? We lost our clerk. He was here earlier this morning. How? Yeah, this is out, this is just a county measure. Does any?
This, this is a county measure. It doesn't appear in the blue book because we aren't asking for any tax increases. We're just asking to keep the mill levy that was previously approved, but then was statutorily capped by the state legislature. And so it didn't appear in the blue book. And the only place to get more information about it is just the kind of public process that's happening. Um, there was an opportunity, a window to submit comments to the clerk and recorder. Um, that uh opened and closed already. Uh, that ends forty-five days, I think, prior to the election date. And so um from this point forward, it's really just, I I know it's being covered in CODO. Um, what's that?
The radio.
Radio program.
You know what, Maggie? I send out emails periodically and you're on my list. Did you get the one recently about the house and code update? Because I think I ha- I've seen that I have your email on here and I can, I will send out information. What's that?
Send that down while I don't have to search for it.
Yes, exactly. Um, let's just touch base and make sure I have your correct email address after. Okay, so I I'll send one on the housing code update, although I don't, I was, I haven't yet sent one out on the ballot measures.
Oh, that's.
I'll make sure you get that. I will. Okay. Yeah, and then I guess as Jared says, you know, reading the ballot um and and trying to fi- and finding information online. In fact, I believe there's an article in the Daily Planet today um on the front page and I have it in my car. So I will give that to you before we leave and I'll give you my email. And then if you could pass it forward to other neighbors, that would be great. Because um I can only do that as an individual. I can't do that as an elected official, um, because I I can't um advocate or oppose a county ballot measure, but as your friend, I can share information.
Sure.
Did I get that right, Laura? Okay. Um, all right, that's it for my commissioner updates. Oh, except that I'm gonna be out of town. I am leaving tomorrow and I will be back late on the fourteenth in time for our meeting on the fifteenth. But I can look at the agenda tomorrow while I'm traveling. Um, and then I'll be out of pocket unless you call me or text me. Okay. Uh, we are now moving on to our last agenda, item thirteen A, Attorney Matters. No, Lance, I'm sorry. I have, I don't have your pic- face in front of me. There you are, coming up, what you been up to besides nursing your COVID?
Um, the only information that I want to share is that I did attend a really interesting REBEL meeting, which is the Rural Renewable Energy Beneficial Electric League that uh EcoAction Partners has put together and it's a gathering of all the regional players, if you will, ranging from Ridgway all the way up to Mountain Village and Tally Ride with us as a part of the umbrella and also SMPA reps. And so the conversation ranged wildly, but with a bunch of experts in the room, uh, I learned a couple useful facts, some of them better news than others. The first is that um tri-states power is going to go up seven percent for the wholesale rate and fifty-four four percent of SMPA's budget is spent on wholesale power from tri-state. That means that we're gonna see as ratepayers some sort of increase with SMPA and the SMPA board is right now meeting to try to figure out exactly what that will be and how it's gonna be distributed amongst the members. Um, the other news is um maybe better, which is, well, it's medium news. Um, as you might know, there was an effort and a grant, federal grant money awarded to do a twenty megawatt solar array near Naterita. And that is on hold awaiting the Montrose County Commissioners meeting where they have a solar moratorium and are trying to work through solar regs, much like we were recently. Um they're due to be meeting today. And we'll see if they come to a conclusion, which would be great, or if they defer decision, which would make that grant money start to slip away. Um, beyond that, I learned a lot of other interesting things, but I'm gonna skip to very local things. Um, it turns out that Rico is working with the R-one school district and perhaps going to be able to put a storage battery for um resilient power storage during a power outage in perhaps in the old school building. And it's been a real struggle for the town to find uh appropriate space for that and suddenly there's an opportunity, kind of like Galena's good idea or Carmen's good idea with the food bank. This is feeling a similar good idea. Um, Ofer microgrid project for resilience is also stalled, but um hoping for a small version just in town hall to keep uh that community's um government. In other words, John Waptronski in communication if there was a long power outage up in Rico in Ofer. And Nukla is um working on a thirty kilowatt solar panel on top of their SMPA offices. Ridgway has gotten a grant to do so. And Norwood continues to look for funding for the floating solar concept that Galena probably has been um working on as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Alrighty, now we move on to item thirteen A, Attorney Matters, and we have a litigation update from Mara Now Boylan.
It's true.
She got married.
My own name.
She got married.
Um, I don't have a lot to to add to the memo. A lot of the key updates in there, we've already discussed. Um, one thing I did want to mention that's not reflected in the memo, but is um particularly relevant to who we have left here, maybe, um, for the paradox uh bankruptcy proceeding. Um, so we've continued to tr- to work with the treasurer and our outside counsel to try and sort out like because now the taxes for the twenty twenty-four year are also delinquent, um, but just trying to get some clarity on what the county can do in terms of trying to collect on the money that's owed. Um, our current bankruptcy counsel is based in Texas because that's where the bankruptcy proceeding is. And so he's had what I read as a limited ability to really advise on how Colorado property tax law or tax law um interacts with the bankruptcy issues. Um, so we have just this week um engaged with a Colorado bankruptcy attorney who is hopefully gonna help us sort out with some like definitive answers on what is the status of all the money that's owed and where and how we might collect on it. Um, because I know Brandy, the treasurer, is really trying to figure out like, should she be issuing tax sale notices for this property and is who's responsible for what money that's um outstanding? So hopefully we'll finally get some clear answers on that and then be able to take some action um to start collecting or or we'll be at a point where we have to evaluate other options if it looks like we really aren't gonna be able to collect on so on some of that money. So I just wanted to give that update because that's not reflected in the memo. And if there are any questions about any of the other updates, happy to answer those.
I do not have any at this time. Do the other commissioners?
I don't. Your memo is very clear.
Yeah, thank you, Maura. I like this format. Know that's something we've carried forward from previous journeys. Lance, anything from you?
No, well done, Maura. Thank you.
Uh, so we have reached the end of our agenda and we have one man standing or one woman sitting. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Maggie. Uh, uh, and I think we are ready for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Um, I'll second, but I've got a question.
Certainly.
Um, I know that we had planned to pick back up in Norwood and knowing that there's only, um, so many hours in the day and we're all on Zoom already, does it make any sense to just keep rolling and not do the extra Norwood meeting?
You know, I would be game for that, um, just so the public knows. And we actually probably will go offline for this since that was going to be, well, like off streaming. Um, we were gonna just circle back to our VOC, VOC goals for twenty-six, twenty-seven. I reviewed them last night and have like two quick questions for you all, fixed a couple of typos. That was it. So I think we could adjourn the meeting and stay on the Zoom. Um, how do you all feel about that? Does anyone else have lengthy, like, changes or big things to talk about that you'd like to do separately?
I don't, but I'm just curious and a question for Maura about the fact that we posted this for the second meeting in Norwood, a different location. If that causes you any legal concerns about us continuing on in essentially a work session.
Well, we would, we could, we could still end this, oh, I see, end this meeting, but have it in, we just be in the wrong place at the wrong time.
Correct.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Didn't we post for being in Norwood at, or did we post a time for Norwood?
Three thirty.
Three thirty.
It's three twenty-five. We're not going to make it to Norwood no matter what.
Yeah.
We could change the sign.
We just got lost.
Yeah. Or we could just can't, we could cancel and postpone if you have legal concerns.
Since Lance is on Zoom, could we record it at least? I think.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
So.
So I think we. Adjourn the regular and then open a work session? Is that what you're proposing?
And, and we can continue the recording? Or would you start a new recording?
Whatever.
I think we should start a new one.
Okay.
Yeah. Lance, we aren't going to go off Zoom, but we're gonna, um, adjourn the meeting, we'll vote to adjourn the meeting, pause the recording or.
We might have to start a new Zoom.
Right.
Otherwise it'll just continue from the original.
Oh, perfect. Okay, so we'll start a new Zoom, we'll all, we'll all hop off and then maybe once we start a new Zoom, Carmen, will you send invites to all of us?
Yeah.
And then we can all log back on. Maybe give us five minutes so we can have a bio break, stretch our legs and do all that administrative work. Does that sound good?
Sure. So I'll see you back at three forty?
Uh, that is, yeah, that's three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five, okay.
All right, thanks. That's a good suggestion, Lance. Thank you. Um, all right, we have a motion and a second. How do you vote to adjourn or not to adjourn?
I to adjourn.
I, I as well. We are unanimous. All right. Thank you, everybody. We'll be back in about ten minutes, Lance.
Thank you.
An invite to the next Zoom.
Lance, it's gonna be, we're, we're just gonna close this one and we're still gonna use the same, we'll just come back home.
Okay, got it, Carmen. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, invite and.
Yeah.
Passionate.
Yeah.
Just finalizing the changes to our document.
We've had, I think, three meetings so far, setting our VOCs in. I'm going to wait for twenty-six, twenty-seven. We, we had like a meeting powered into the state of the four rail line. We were, and it just worked in our, we're modeling over on our way home. Because I thought it might be long, we didn't want to all have to.
We're calling.
So we're just going to do it here rather than. Cause we wanted all this first. Um, Matt, you don't want to do this.
Engage mediation. Agreement, I E like.